Okay, good evening to you all and welcome to the Town Council's first regular meeting in the year of 2023. So I guess it's too late to wish everybody a happy new year, happy 23. So we're going to jump right into our meeting. We have lots of, lots of things to take care of tonight. So we'll begin by asking our clerk, if she will, to call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tim Vance.
Here.
Councilmember Behringer.
Here.
Councilmember Singleton.
Here.
Councilmember Dellinger.
Here.
And Councilmember Matthews.
Here.
Okay, thank you, Council, for all being present and timely. I'm going to call on Councilmember Singleton, who will lead us in our pledge of allegiance, and also he will guide us through our invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, united in the heavens, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated.
Would like to join in the invocation. Please bow. Gracious and kind Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to gather here this evening, take care of business for our town and our citizens, as you watch over us and guide us, be with the council, the town staff, be with the citizens that are here, help us to focus on the decision-making process as these decisions have impact for some time to come. Father, we lift up those who are sick, those who are recovering from medical illness or surgery, also lift up those who have lost loved ones recently, as you wrap your arms around them and comfort them in these tough times. And please be with the men and women of our military who are serving on military bases and installations all around this world, protecting our freedoms and the freedoms of the countries in which they serve. In your son's name, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Ms. Singleton. Okay, the first item of business is something referred to in the agenda as petitions and comments. And so I'll read to you an introduction in regarding to that. This portion of the meeting is to receive comments from the public on items not included in this agenda. Citizens should sign up with the town clerk to speak prior to the start of the meeting. The council is interested in hearing your concerns but may not take action or deliberate on subject matters brought up during the petitions and comments segment. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the appropriate town officials or staff and may be scheduled for a future agenda. And so the town clerk has advised me that we have one person who has signed up to speak. I would remind you, if you will be respectful of everybody's time, we'll ask you to hold your comments to no more than three minutes. So I will recognize at this time, Mr. Chris R. Mills for comments.
Mr. Mayor, Chris Mills, I am not a resident of the town of Garner. I live outside the town of Garner and have done so for my entire life. It has been brought to my attention that the town of Garner chooses, in wording, to merge with the Garner Fire Department. The Garner Fire Department is a nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization and serves not only the town of Garner but unincorporated Wake County as well. The majority of the Garner Fire Department service area is in unincorporated areas of Wake County. The minority area is in the town of Garner. I do not wish to be in the town of Garner. I do not wish to be annexed by the town of Garner. I do not wish to be in the town of Garner's ETJ. I furthermore do not think the town of Garner has any business with the fire department. The fire department has been solvent. It started in the 50s when the town of Garner didn't want to cough up the money to start a fire department, and now they want to get into the fire service business. I really don't understand it. There was a question and answer session held on the 11th in Garner and on the 12th in Panther Branch, which is just south of Garner, outside of y'all's ETJ. It was presented by the North Carolina Fire Chiefs Consulting Group. This group was apparently hired by the town of Garner. Don't know what that cost, don't know anything about that process, but this question and answer session left us with way more questions than we got answers. There was a small little PowerPoint video or a presentation with about eight slides shown, zero literature. We got zero. We walked away from that meeting, that question and answer session, with absolutely no information. Our questions were not answered. We didn't get any information about what's happening in this process, why they're taking over the fire department. And I want to say takeover because I've talked to board members with the fire department, and multiple board members are saying this is more of an acquisition and takeover than it is a merger. Not really sure. I don't really have any questions. I just want to be known that I don't think the town of Garner has any business operating fire services, especially in areas that have nothing to do with the town of Garner. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council.
Thank you, Mr. Mills.
Mr. Mills, just a little bit of information. If there ever is a merger, it has nothing to do with annexation. The county would like for the town to take over the fire department because the county pays for that part. They'd like to work with one group and one organization. So it's tied together with what Wake County has done to other departments throughout the county, and that's, that's what's driving some of this. But yes, Garner has the largest fire service district in Wake County by far, but most of the calls are into town because of first responder calls that they have. But there's no annexation. If it ever happened, there's no annexation, there's no nothing. The county will still be the county, the town will still be the town, and it would work as one, one operation.
I understand what you're saying. And when you say the county, do you have an individual's name? Because Wake County Fire Services is not endorsing this so-called merger.
Mr. Mills, I appreciate your concern, sir. I was at the meeting you speak of. You and I spoke some at that meeting. I think it was fully vetted. There'll be other opportunities. There's a survey that's going to be sent out that if you signed up for, you certainly can express your opinion there.
So those eight people are going to get surveys, or the people that are inside the area of jurisdiction where you plan on taking over?
People will get surveys who, who were at the meeting for sure, and perhaps others as well. We have a lot of business to take care of tonight. I believe your three minutes is up, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir, much. Okay, Council, the first item of business on the agenda this evening will be the adoption of the agenda. We got word late this afternoon that an item is asked to be continued, I believe. Let me see, I think I made a notice. Item number nine is SUP. Ms. Attorney, help me identify which one.
Yes, it's SUP SP 2204 Garner Station Lots 106 and 107 on Fayetteville Road. They have requested a continuance to the February 21st, 2023 meeting, assuming Council wants to continue this. And if it announces on the record the date and time of the continuation, then no further notice is required.
And it is listed, I believe it's number nine on my agenda.
Yes, under public hearings.
Under public hearings, yeah. Thank you, okay. So, Council, with that notation or that change, that will not be included this evening. I will ask you if, if you will approve the agenda otherwise.
Second.
Okay, thank you very much. Motion properly made in second. If you favor the motion, would you vote aye?
Aye.
Okay, and if you're opposed, no. And of course, there is no opposition. Okay, the next item of business, we, we don't have any presentations tonight of any kind.
Mayor, you have to vote on the continuance.
Oh, excuse me. Okay, yes, all right.
Would we move that we continue SUP SP 2204 until Tuesday, February 21st, 2023?
Second.
Okay, all right. Motion properly made in second. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Okay, if there's any opposition, no. Thank you, ma'am. All right, the next item is, well, I was asking if there are any presentations. I'm not aware of any. Mr. Manager, are you?
No, sir, I don't, don't know of any.
Okay. All right, so the consent agenda. I believe I counted there are 10 items on the consent agenda. Unless a council member desires to take one of those items off and have it for public discussion, I'll ask you to approve the consent agenda.
Will move.
Second.
Okay, motion properly made in second. All in favor of, of adopting the consent agenda, would you vote aye?
Aye.
And if there's any opposition, no. And there is none. Okay, we will now move to the first regular business item, which is under the heading of public hearings. And we will, we have several voluntary annexations this evening. And so I will recognize a planning department for item number, for the first item, public hearing, voluntary contiguous annexation position, Annex 2218. Mr. Bowie, you're going to do that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I would, we be presenting 101 Waterfield Ridge Place Annexation, Annexation dash 2218 in December, in December 2019. Recommendation is adopt annexation ordinance.
Okay. Anything else?
I just want me to go through the rest of the slides, just for that one.
Would you like to?
That is the wish of the board.
Does Council want to hear anything else? Okay.
As we see, here's a aerial photo of the site. And here you have CUP SP 1926 Waterfield Ridge Apartments, the plan was 268 units. And that is the end of that, this particular.
Okay, okay, thank you, Mr. Bowie. Any questions for Mr. Bowie, Council? Okay. All right, appreciate that. This is a public hearing, so I will ask if there's anyone here who came to make comments on this particular issue. Seeing and hearing none, this item is ripe for a motion.
Mayor, move to adopt annexation ordinance 2023-5175.
Second.
Motion properly made in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, please vote aye.
Aye.
If there's any opposition, no. And there is none. Okay, are you doing the next one as well, Mr. Bowie?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Go right ahead.
The second petition is 724 Rand Road, Annexation 22-11. Due on case information, owner is John and Elizabeth Pittman, 724 Rand Road, tract size is .41 acres. This petition follows a request for public water and sewer at 724 Rand Road, single family. Recommendation is to adopt annexation ordinance. Here is an aerial site, aerial photo of the location. And that is the end of that presentation.
Okay, thanks, sir. Any question, Mr. Bowie? Hearing none. Anybody from the public here to speak on this item? Seeing and hearing none, I will call for a motion on this item.
I move to adopt annexation ordinance 2023-5172.
Second.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Vance. All right, if you favor the motion, would you vote aye?
Aye.
If there's any opposition, no. And there is none. Okay, item three.
The third petition is 5907 Fayetteville Road, Annexation 22-12. The property is owned by 401 South LLC, located at 5907 Fayetteville Road. The tract size is 5.37 acres. This petition follows a request for public water for an existing commercial use. The annexation is related to rezoning KCZ-22-6, 5907 Fayetteville Road, that will be heard later in new old business. Recommendation is adopt annexation ordinance.
And I will just mention to Council after confering with the attorney, we will not ask for a, a vote on this particular item at this time. We will handle that under the new and old business, the item that Mr. Bowie referred to. But do you have any questions for Mr. Bowie? Okay, hearing none. Public hearing, any members of the public here to comment on this particular item? Okay, seeing and hearing none. Okay, we will vote on that under the other item, as I mentioned earlier. Okay, the next one?
This is annexation petition, Annexation 2113, 4700 Guy Road.
You may have missed one. Item number three, in the order we have it.
I was going by, I was going by on.
Okay, that's fine. Long as we, long as we get to it, that's fine. Go ahead.
Owner is SDA LLC, location 4700 Guy Road, tract size is 6.17 acres. This petition follows a request for public water at 4700 Guy Road. CZSP-2204 approved November 4th, 2021, for 1,000 square foot of warehouse flex space. Recommendation is adoption annexation ordinance. And here's an aerial photo of the site. And here's a site plan, CZSP-2204, 4700 Guy Road, which was approved on November 4th, 2021. Are any questions on this one?
Okay. Any person from the public came here to speak on this matter? If you did, let me know. Okay, hearing and seeing none, we will vote on this particular item. If you favor the recommendation, would you vote aye?
Good morning, Mr. Mayor.
Excuse me.
Mayor, I move we adopt ordinance, annexation ordinance 2023-5171.
Second.
Thanks, sir. Okay, now a motion. If you favor the motion, would you vote aye?
Aye.
Okay, and there is no opposition. Mr. Bowie, do you want to go back to, to the item we missed?
He's got it.
Oh, does he? Okay, okay, thank you.
This petition is for 8012 Hebron Church Road, Annexation 22-13. The property is owned by Mark Cooper. Property is located at 8012 Hebron Church Road. Tract size is 1.03 acres plus .14 acres of adjacent right-of-way, which totals 1.17 plus minus acres. This petition follows a request for public water and sewer at 8012 Hebron Church Road. This house will tie into utilities at town of Ridgemore, CUP SB 2001 Ridgemore South, which was approved October 20th, 2020. And the recommendation is to adopt annexation ordinance. Here's an aerial photo of the site. That concludes my presentation.
Okay, questions for Mr. Bowie, from anybody on council? Okay, hearing none. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this item? Okay, hearing and seeing none, a motion is in order.
Mayor, move to approve annexation ordinance 2021-5174.
Second. Okay, motion properly made in second. If you favor the motion, would you vote aye?
Aye.
And if there's opposition, no. And there is none. Okay.
Annexation 2113, 4700 Guy Road.
We did that one.
So that's the one we did?
We should be on Oak Manor.
I think it was on my list twice, okay. Annexation request 2217, Oak Manor. A public hearing was set for December 20th, 2022, not December 5th, as in the staff report. Just want to make that clarification. The property is owned by Sherri Ferguson, Martha Williams, Dion Winton, and Meredith Homes of Carolinas Incorporated. Location, Oak Manor. Tract size is 170.03 total acres of intervening right-of-way and contiguous right-of-way adjacent to the town's corporate limits. The petition follows a request for public water and sewer for PDMP-1902 Oak Manor PRD, which is formerly Bethel PRD, which is approved November 19th, 2019. It was approved for 575 single-family lots, and our recommendation is adopt annexation ordinance.
Okay, questions for Mr. Bowie on this item? Anybody? Comments from the public on this particular item? Okay, hearing and seeing none. Call for a motion?
Move to adopt annexation ordinance 2023-5159.
Second.
Second. Okay, motion properly made in second. All in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Yeah, opposition, no. And there is none. I'm sorry? Okay, there is, okay. Mr. Dellinger is voting no on this item. The motion approves by the majority of the council vote. Okay, Mr. Bowie, let me see where we are. I'm at item seven on my agenda. Is that correct? Okay, yes, thank you.
Good evening, council members and Mr. Mayor. I'm Ashley Harris, and I'm here to present Copper Ridge CZPD 2202. This is a planned development conditional zoning, which is a zoning district that allowed for a little bit more flexibility than some of our than some of our traditional residential planning districts. So the applicant is KB Home Carolinas, and the owners are multiple of the HoCutt family. The location is 01010 Road, and the tract is 55.77 acres, give or take. So as I said, this request is for a planned residential development, which is a master development plan, a PUD book, with written conditions to conditionally rezone 55.77 acres from single-family residential, which is now rural agricultural as of the townwide rezoning, to a planned residential development conditional, which will be adopted as residential four conditional under the new rezoning ordinance. The site is located along 01010 Road and may be further identified as the pins presented here. There are architectural and other conditions proposed. So as I said, the site is along the northern side of 1010 Road, just north of Vance Elementary School. It is immediately adjacent to the Eagle Ridge subdivision and the Whitecroft Manor subdivision. From the site, it's hard to see from 1010 Road because it is behind a few of the parcels that are along the road, but is generally the woods that you can see in this picture. And then this is a photo from one of the connecting residential neighborhoods. And this is the other neighborhood, which we are proposing a connection through. So the adjacent land use and zoning are for the Eagle Ridge subdivision is a single-family subdivision. There is also rural agricultural Wake County single-family large lots to the south, so outside of Town of Garner jurisdiction. And then R2, Whitecroft Manor, single-family. To the west is also rural agricultural, single-family large lot. Here is a brief history of some of the zonings in the area. So as you can see, the majority has been through the Eagle Ridge subdivision, which started in the 90s and went through the early 2000s. And then there was also the ETJ expansion in 2017, which brought this area into our jurisdiction. So the existing zoning is rural agricultural. This district primarily accommodates agriculture, civil culture, and rural residential, also known as large lot, single-family residential uses. Other typical uses are found in rural areas, including utility structures and other compatible uses. Property zones RA are typically found in areas outside of the corporate limits where water and sewer services are not readily available. This district represents the maximum density often achievable under private well and septic. So this proposed rezoning does offer a number of zoning conditions. These will be adopted as R4C271. So they are proposing that they limit the uses to just single-family detached residential. The maximum density shall not exceed 2.5 dwelling units per acre with a maximum of 139 units. And a homeowners association will be established in accordance with the UDO. HOA documents will be recorded with the first final plat. With the PUD district, they were required to compare themselves to the district standard of R12. And so you see that they have noted that a deviation of greater than 20% has been requested, and that lots shall be 5,200 square foot at a minimum. They also have a deviation of greater than 20% for lot setbacks, which are proposed below. And so the proposed are a 20-foot front yard setback, a 22-foot garage setback, 20-foot rear, 5-foot side with a 10-foot combined, and then a 10-foot corner side. All single families shall have at least a two-car garage. All foundations with an exposed height of greater than 12 inches shall be finished with masonry product. All foundations with exposed height of 12 inches or less shall be textured with parjing and painted to match siding material. And then all foundations shall be turned-down slab, raised slab, stem wall, and have a finished floor of at least 12 inches above grade. Garage doors shall have carriage door hardware and windows. Elevations with cantilever front elevation shall have decorative brackets or shelf supports for single-family homes. All homes shall have a minimum of eight-inch eaves on the front and rear, and then a minimum eight-inch roof overhang on all sides. There will be an outdoor deck or patio, a minimum of 100 square feet. A minimum of 50% of homes in Copper Ridge shall have a covered front porch or stoop, a minimum of 24 square feet. And any cantilever projections shall have cosmetic brackets or shelf supports directly underneath them. All dwelling units will have one operable window per habitable floor on each side elevation when facing public right-of-way. Benches and trash receptacles are required in the amenity areas, and the main amenity will include two of the following features: a shelter, dog park, gardens, bocce ball, or cornhole. Vinyl siding shall be prohibited, and black aluminum picket-type fencing shall be provided around the wet pond SCMs. They have also committed to a minimum of 220 square feet for the garages. So community information, the overall neighborhood character is largely residential, consisting of primarily single-family detached residents on large lots with fewer agricultural tracts. Eagle Ridge is the subdivision to the north, which was annexed into Garner and has public water and sewer. There was a TIA required by the town's UDO and NCDOT requirements, which was completed in April of 2022. Traffic counts were performed for Chandler Drive at White Oak. And I'm sorry, it looks like this area might not have been updated. I apologize for that, but there was a TIA associated with this, which should be written in your staff report. Here we go, traffic. The projected area will have access on 1010 Road. And generally, information that NCDOT had available is from 2011 to 2021. There was a TIA, which was completed in January of 2022. The NCDOT congestion management unit recommended 100 feet of internal storage at the 1010 Road access, exiting the site, and 50-foot dedicated westbound right-turn lane off 1010 Road into the site. Other recommendations included a contribution of 10% for the cost of installing a lay at Old Stage Road and Seastone Street, striping a 50-foot dedicated left-turn lane onto the site along 1010 Road. I apologize for that confusion. There was a neighborhood meeting that was held on June 29th, 2022, at 6:00 p.m., and there were 13 people in attendance who are highlighted on this map. So here is the overall master plan. As you can see, there are two single-family products. Product A is a slightly smaller footprint than Product B, which is in the orange color on the screen. The acreage is 55.7 acres, and the maximum density is 139 units at 2.5 dwelling units an acre. There is a buffered stream that runs through the central and north portion of the site, and then a little bit on the south corner. And then the proposed amenity space, which is directly off of the main access off of 1010 Road. There is a pedestrian trail network that is proposed throughout the site, which is a requirement of the PUD district, that there be a trail network that connects each of the amenity spaces. You can see that there is a stub-street connection to the north into Eagle Ridge, as well as into Whitecroft Manor. So these are some conceptual elevations that were provided by the applicant, showing the two different products, one being a slightly smaller footprint than the other. And as I stated, so both of the products will have the same setbacks, but the Product A will have a minimum lot width of 40 feet, and Product B will have a minimum lot width of 50 feet. Again, the front setback is 20 feet, but 22 feet for the garage. A side setback is 5 feet, and the rear setback is 20. The corner side setback is 10 feet, and the maximum height is 40 feet. Landscaping and buffers, the tree canopy cover is a sliding scale from 18 to 20%, which was the rule at the time of submittal. Copper Ridge will contain 10.31 acres, or 18.5% of the total development area, and a minimum of 13.5% of the total tree coverage will be preserved trees. The perimeter buffer is a 25-foot undisturbed perimeter buffer around the entire development, and there will be street trees provided every 40 feet along all the roadways. There are no FEMA-designated floodplains, however, there are buffered riparian streams running throughout the middle and northern portion of the site. The topography shows that the water drains north towards Swift Creek from 1010 Road. Copper Ridge is located within the watershed protection area and is subject to storm water quality requirements for nitrogen and total suspended solids, as well as water quality quantity requirements for the 1, 10, and 25-year storm events. Development proposes five SCMs, and these SCMs shall satisfy all water quality and quantity requirements. The site will be served by City of Raleigh Water and Sewer Infrastructure. Water will connect to existing service in Canascus and 1010 Road. Sewer service will tie into existing lines with the Eagle Ridge subdivision and will be extended to the adjacent and upstream properties per the Raleigh Water Policy. Open space, they are required to provide 25%, and they are anticipated to provide over 25%, including the preserved streamed, the buffers, preserved tree canopy, the active recreation center with a clubhouse, and the private trail system. Open spaces will be owned and maintained by the HOA. The lighting will meet UDO requirements. And the next steps will be that this case will be sent to Planning Commission to determine plan consistency before coming back to you for a final reasonableness and action. So staff recommends that once the council has heard comments, concerns, and questions from the general public, that conditional zoning request, CZPD 2202, be referred to the Planning Commission for their review and recommendation regarding plan consistency.
Thank you for your very thorough report. Let me see if council has any questions for you. And I'll start to my right with Mr. Vance. Any questions, sir?
No questions at this time.
Mr. Dellinger? Okay, Mr. Singleton?
I've got some, but I'll wait till we hear more information first.
Okay.
Nothing at this time.
Okay, all right. I'm supposing the developer is here and wishes to be heard?
Yes, they have a short presentation.
Okay, we'll hear from them next.
All right, good evening, Mayor, and members of Town Council. My name is Jessie Hardesty. I'm a planner with McAdams, a part of the applicant team. And I'm also joined this evening by Roman and Thurm with KB Home, who are here to also answer any questions that you might have.
I believe we need you to state your address, if you will.
Oh, I'm sorry, 621 Hillsborough Street in Raleigh.
Thank you.
I apologize, the clicker is not working. There we go. Okay, so this project is located in southwest Garner, off 1010 Road. Ashley already went over this, and I forgot to mention Ashley. Thank you for that great overview. She gave a really great overview of the project, so I will try to keep this relatively brief. So our site is outlined in red, as you can see, and falls within the medium-density residential future land use designation, which calls for single-family duplex, triplex, quadplex, town and townhomes at 2.5 to 5 dwelling units per acre. So we are proposing single-family homes with varying lot sizes at the lowest end of this density at 2.5 dwelling units per acre. This project also falls within the Swift Creek Land Management Plan, where the threshold for new suburban development is 2.5 dwelling units per acre, or a minimum of six dwelling units per acre for new urban development. So we had originally submitted this project with a slightly higher density than we are here with today, and it was staff's direction to drop this acreage down to 2.5 units per acre to meet the criteria of this plan. So, and which makes sense, providing the surrounding land uses, we felt it was most appropriate to have this lower-density single-family residential in this area, but still meet the medium-density residential designation of the future land use map. So this is our proposed plan, which you'll see we've carefully designed around the environmental features on site. There are buffered streams in the southwest corner, the north property line, central to the property, and on the eastern property line. And we have established a large park space central to the neighborhood for an amenity for the residents that's also connected by trails to other natural open spaces and program spaces. And you can see those trails in purple on the screen. We're proposing two different lot widths that will vary the product throughout the development, with a 40-foot wide lot and a 50-foot wide lot. And we put a focus on designing this neighborhood so that a majority of the properties either back up to or front open space. And we'll also be providing trees along all streets to provide a more aesthetic streetscape. I do want to mention our neighborhood meeting that we held back in June. We had a number of neighbors in attendance from the Eagle Ridge and Whitecroft Manor development. There were a number of questions at this meeting, but two of the main concerns that we heard were the connection to Hurst Drive and a concern with trails being too close to their homes. So in response to this, we removed the connection to Hurst Drive, and we shifted trails so that they were not directly adjacent to the neighboring properties. We included that with our second submittal. We sent a follow-up to those neighbors with our response to their concerns in August, and that was after our second submittal. And we also informed them of our density reduction and increased architectural commitments. We also had one neighbor who had followed up with us individually, who we've worked with her to provide stub access to her property as she had requested, because it would have been difficult for her to have future access off of 1010, given the direct adjacency to our access off of 1010. So our original discussions with staff after our neighborhood meeting, we had brought up the concern with Hurst Drive, and we didn't think that there would be any issues with removing that connection, which is why we removed it for our second submittal. But after staff had looked into this further, they determined that there was really no way around this, and it would be required that we had to make that connection. So we did have to add that back in with our third submittal. All that being said, there have been many iterations of this layout that have stemmed from discussions from both neighbors and staff. And we feel that we've truly done our best to address what we heard from both neighbors and staff, to create a project that works both economically and provides the town with a well-designed development. And that leads me to my next slide, highlighting the commitments we've made in this rezoning. So just, I know that Ashley touched on many of these, but just to highlight once more the various commitments that KB Home is making for this neighborhood. Commitment to just single-family detached with the max of 2.5 dwelling units per acre. Their required HOA, over 18% tree coverage over the development, as well as greater than 25% open space. Minimum 5,200 square foot lots. All homes having at least a two-car garage. The large amenity, which will be over 1.5 acres, central to the development, and extensive trails connecting to those amenity spaces. Aluminum fencing around the wet ponds, as well as a number of architectural conditions, where slab-on-grade is prohibited, the carriage door hardware, carriage door hardware and windows on garages, and then decorative brackets on front elevations, outdoor deck and patios on all units, as well as vinyl siding will be prohibited. So we feel confident about this project, and we will now open it up to any questions or any comments. Thank you.
Okay, council, questions for just witness? Start with Ms. Peringer. Okay, Mr. Dellinger?
Thank you for the information. I do have a question about the connection to Hurst Drive that was there and then removed and then added back. And when it was added back, what were the conditions or reasons for it having to be added back? Was it that you weren't able to create a cul-de-sac there that would meet the standards? What was the explanation?
So we, if you see on the screen, there's kind of a long road that extends from, that extends all the way to Hurst Drive. So we removed that entire road. So there were no homes over there. We just removed that altogether and left that as green space. But it was staff's direction that it was going to create a cul-de-sac that was too long on Hurst Drive. And I believe there may have been some other requirements. I might refer to staff to help out with that one.
To be clear, the homes on the northeast portion of the property, you had removed that to eliminate that road?
We had relocated them elsewhere on the property, yes. So we had shifted some things around. But yes, we removed that whole section of roadway.
And I can speak to that a little bit. So the existing Hurst Drive in Whitecroft Manor is out of compliance currently. I think that the limit for a permanent dead end is 200 feet. And so right now, it's currently well over that. And so in order to be in compliance, we would have to make this connection, which ultimately would reconnect eventually to Seaston Street and also provide an alternative exit to 1010.
Is Hurst Drive even, is it in the town of Garner or ETJ?
I believe it's in the ETJ.
But it was established before the ETJ, before it became the ETJ.
That's all the questions I have right now.
If you wish to speak, I think I'm gonna have to ask you to let her present. We would need you to come to the podium at the proper time.
Yeah, and I think that Mr. Bamford has more information that we could pull up, that original plat that shows it's a temporary turnaround, which temporary turnaround means that it was intended from the beginning to become a future connection.
I guess I'm just confused. If they didn't have a road in their plan, you can't make somebody build a road. It's not in our transportation plan, that route. That's all the questions I have right now. I'll let someone else.
Mr. Vance?
Yes, just for a point of clarification, I just saw some in the audience trying to point to where Hurst Drive. Can you identify where Hurst Drive is for the audience?
Can you see my mouse here? So this is the Hurst Drive connection.
Laugh. Good.
Yep.
That's it.
I give you a chance. Mr. Matthews?
Not right yet, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Singleton?
So Hurst Drive, so apparently the HOA is in charge of the maintenance of the roads in that subdivision. It's not a DOT-maintained road. That's correct. Right.
Mr. Singleton, I did cursory review. It appears that as it was platted, it was platted and approved as a public right-of-way. It has not, as far as I know, been taken over by NC DOT for maintenance. But they did approve the plat, and it's listed as a public street. Now, there may be some private streets within that subdivision, but this particular one was built to public street standards. That's the note that's on the plat.
Okay. All right. So, just a moment. When you read, there's 139 proposed single-family detached homes as it stands. So when you took out the connection to Hurst, you had to rearrange. So were there at one time more than 139, and then you had to take some back out, or you just have rearranged them on this, on the property?
So in our first submittal, we had more than 139, but we reduced our density down to the 2.5 dwelling units per acre, which staff had advised us of. We did relocate some of those lots that would have, that would have been up there, and our open spaces shifted around some. The amenity space that was central to the site was, got a little bit smaller, relocated some of the lots in that area. Yeah, does that answer your question?
Yes. The biggest driver to reducing the number of lots was the 2.5 units per acre. But staff recommended?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else for this witness? Okay. Are there other persons from the developer who wishes to speak at this time?
They're here to answer questions if you have them.
Okay. All right. All right. I believe that's all for this witness, right?
Thank you.
Okay. And the developer, there's no one else from them, right? Okay. All right, this time, this is a public hearing, so if you desire to speak on this matter, you need to come to the podium, and I'll recognize you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name's James Locke. I'm the homeowner of Lot 33 in Whitecroft Manor, which would be the last house, or the home that'd be directly bordering the proposed Copper Ridge development. And the picture that they use showing that, showing that road is not exactly recent. There are now, you know, our house and many others. But our main concerns, we're not, I'm not really opposed to the subdivision. We appreciate the cooperation with KB Homes and hearing us out on our concerns over connecting to Hurst Drive. My biggest objection is I don't understand the need to connect to Hurst Drive when there's already a connection to Eagle Ridge. I'm curious if it's been considered the road width and everything of Hurst Drive. Hurst Drive measures 20 feet road surface from edge to edge. There's no, there's no curb, there's no sidewalks. The proposed roads in Copper Ridge are 27 feet road surface or road width and 32 feet curb to curb. I don't understand connecting down to a neighborhood with only a very narrow road, which, you know, currently we have trouble, you know, two cars passing at the same time. In addition, I personally have two young children who play there. There's many other families with kids who play on that street or play in the yards. I just don't understand the, you know, necking down to, from 27 feet down to 20, or from 32 feet curb to curb down to 20. Additionally, don't understand the need for three connections. According to the town of Garner, any subdivision under 250 homes or 250 lots is only required to have two connections. Subdivision over 75 lots shall have at least two access points, but under, only at 250 or more lots is required to have three. Wouldn't it make more sense to not have that connection at Hurst and the connection at Cusackis, which the roads in Eagle Ridge are roughly the same size as the roads are proposed in Copper Ridge? I'm curious why they decided to, they needed to make, you know, put that connection back in. But that is our main concern, is the traffic. In addition, you know, where that connects would be at the valley of two very long blind hills. We're very concerned about increased traffic through the neighborhood, speeds, and things like that. So that's our biggest concern there.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Michael. Last name is Adams. And I own the subdivision of On Track, which is two partials over from this. And my concern, I've seen it partially being addressed, but my concern is traffic. 1010 Road is my, my way out, or way in. And 1010 is extremely busy. It could take as much as 10 minutes or more to try to get out of the driveway in the morning. And in the afternoon, the traffic backs up. And if you'll put up on the map to 1010, just below where this subdivision is, there is a curl in the road. And that curl in the road backs up for a great distance in the afternoons. I don't know how much of the traffic from this subdivision would be coming back out to 1010, but I do know that unless something is done to open up 1010 and allow traffic to flow better, it's going to be an issue. Currently, we're looking at, you know, just a two-way road. And I mean, I've lived here from the time where you could walk up to the corner of the driveway and see your car come down every 10 minutes versus traffic being backed up. That, there again, we have a situation from 6:00 in the morning up through about 8:00 in the morning with Vance School. We have school buses that are coming into, into drop-off kids, which ties up the road. I mean, when you have traffic that's tied in both directions and you have a school bus, it can try, you know, can tie up the road for those buses to get in and get out, and those amount of students to get to school. And there again, we have the same issue in the afternoon. Those buses are coming back to pick up these kids, and that ties up traffic. So I don't have any answers for any of it, but I just need to know that if this subdivision was to come in, how much of that traffic would come back to 1010 and add to the problem? If we're talking about 139 units, I gather the average house has two cars. I don't know if all of that comes back onto 1010 Road, or if it, you know, if it's divided out. So it's, you know, it's a major concern in the aspect of, you kind of feel trapped. You know, I've seen emergencies happen, and during some of these high-traffic times, any ambulance, fire trucks, and everything else have problems in that. The light at the corner of 1010 and Old Stage gets tied up quite a bit, because you've got traffic going four different ways. And there again, 1010 is a traffic pattern for most people coming out of Cleveland School Road and coming across to either get to Wake Tech or to get back out to Fayetteville Road. So it carries a lot of traffic, and I'm just hoping that whatever the council decides to do, that that would be one of their major concerns.
Thank you very much, sir.
Mr. Adams, you said your property is west of this?
Yeah, I'm on On Track Road. I'm closer to, I'm closer to Old Stage. There is a lot on the corner of Old Stage, and then I'm the second lot in. I have four partials on my, on my subdivision, which is On Track. And then there is another subdivision, there is another subdivision, I mean, track, and then a house, and then this partial will be there.
Right. I know where you're at. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hey there, Mayor, Town Council. I'm Richard Lee, Dr. Richard Lee. And I'm a native of Garner, pro-graduate Garner Senior High School. Live here now, and I'm a faculty at Duke in the Department of Gastroenterology as a physician. My home place, to make a long story short, is just west of there, adjacent to this property. And part of my home place is being sold too, but on that part. But I keep all that in our culture. And I was raised there. We raised tobacco there, as most people did. And my, I have multiple concerns. I think Mr. Adams really went over well the traffic issues. I think the infrastructure for traffic is totally overwhelming that area now. I think it will be for a while. And with that kind of traffic coming out back and forth concerning children and everything else, that's absolutely without a doubt a problem. I have, our culture is what I plan to keep my part, my part of the home place is gonna stay that, and our culture and that, just getting traffic in and out of that from tractors and otherwise is dangerous. It was dangerous when I was growing up, as probably y'all know, ever had to deal with this. It's more dangerous now. And with more traffic there, it's gonna be very difficult. I, there's other, other points to be made. There is, from our cultural viewpoint, we use tremendous, well, it was used legally, of course, that point, you know, the chemicals used for tobacco over the years. I don't know how well this is addressed. It may, maybe I'm out of school here. But as a physician, I do know some of the side effects of these materials. Everybody knows, well, there's a lot of chemicals used in tobacco, and we use them legally, of course. MH30 is one of them, but everybody knows what DDT is. That's all over that place there. I don't know how well it's been delineated with groundwater or not, but that needs to be a thought process, too. And a lot of, a lot of other side effects associated with these chemicals, as I'm sure y'all well know. Any case, I wish you would put this on hold, if at all possible. There are other Native American artifacts here in that area that need to be looked, probably looked more into by the state government itself, but I wish this was put on hold with, for more study. I think this is, hasn't been well thought out, given the situation and the area that it's in. And I really appreciate your time, and thank you.
You understand, Mr. Lee, that the council's not gonna take formal action on this tonight? It'll go to the Planning Commission as the next step in the process?
Yes, sir. And I just want to get my two cents in, so to speak. But when do we meet again for this?
I don't think a date has been set for the ultimate action. It's probably coming to the next planning meeting, I believe. Is that right, John?
Planning Commission, February?
February will be when it goes to the Planning Commission.
Will you get notified of that at the time?
I believe so. Well, I don't know.
I don't think that there's a formal announcement for Planning Commission, but it is posted on our website. And if you give me your email address, I can contact you directly.
I'd really appreciate that.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Hi, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name is Lindsay Addison, and I live in Whitecroft Manor, right on 1013 Whitecroft Drive. My husband and I moved there five years ago. Love the neighborhood, love the area, but as everybody's mentioned, traffic is a huge issue. That's one of our main concerns, and bringing that traffic into our small neighborhood and community. We have, I think, a total of 52 buildable lots in our neighborhood, and 42 are built now. I have signatures, which might not do a hill of beans of good, of 38 of them that oppose cutting through to Hurst, just due to, like, the financial obligations that may come down to us as homeowners to restructure the road, rebuild the road, upkeep the road. Our president of the HOA is here with a board member, and the financial obligation that I heard of that would fall on us as homeowners to maintain our privately funded road would fall to us, which we don't want, and, as well as the traffic zooming through and being a cut-through to Old Stage Road. So I hope you would consider that, and I've got this documentation here with questions and concerns of our, our community. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name is Zach Brown. I'm a resident of Whitecroft Manor. My home faces Hurst Drive, and I would like to echo the, the concerns about the cut-through. I challenge McAdams to go back and rework those six lots and potentially cul-de-sac that road that they have tying into Hurst Drive. As Ms. Addison stated, the traffic increase within Whitecroft Manor is gonna be pretty significant, given the fact that you guys have been made aware of the, the traffic there at 1010 and Old Stage. I do realize that NC DOT has a intersection improvement plan for 2025 construction. However, I don't believe that that is gonna solve any kind of traffic issue regarding this subdivision and the cut-through that it, that our neighborhood faces with tying into Hurst Drive. So I would, again, like McAdams to maybe rework their site plan so that it doesn't cut through Whitecroft Manor. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor and Council, my name is David Rinders. We, my wife and I are here tonight to meet about this. We live in Whitecroft Manor. We are not, our home is not positioned on Hurst Lane. My concern is that with 540 being, exiting onto Old Stage Road, that there's gonna be a driven amount of traffic that's gonna use Old Stage Road to access Fayetteville Road. The subdivision that we are in, the egress and ingress to that is on Old Stage Road. If we increase more traffic coming past Old Stage Road and increase the amount of traffic coming out of Whitecroft Manor, we're gonna have considerable difficulties getting in and out of that subdivision with the increased traffic. It's gonna be difficult with the increased traffic from 540. I think that is a concern that needs to be addressed. I oppose the connection to Hurst Lane for one of that, that specific reason as well. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Okay. Okay, I believe we've heard from most everybody at this point in time. If others have expressed your opinion, we'll ask for a vote of hands, and I probably won't recognize everybody who's here, but go right ahead. Ma'am, I recognize you.
I'm Janne Williams. I'm the president-
I'm the president of the HOA for Whitecroft Manor. And our biggest concern is where will the construction entrance be for this new subdivision? We cannot have the road construction equipment nor the house construction equipment running through our neighborhood. Our streets are public, but they have not been taken over by North Carolina as of today. And we appreciate if they would reconsider adding to Hurst Drive and maybe making a cul-de-sac on their side.
Okay, thank you for your comments. I believe I've heard from everyone. I'm going to close a public hearing at this time.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just provide a little additional information. So Hurst Drive is currently non-conforming. It does not meet the requirements for a permanent turnaround. It is too long under the state fire code. That temporary turnaround could be converted to a permanent, I'm sorry, to a permanent cul-de-sac or turnaround. That would impact those two lots within Whitecroft Manor at the end of it. However, that would also require something to happen to the subdivision Copper Ridge if they were going to include lots in that northeast corner. So they would have to, so there would have to be a redesign of the plan and something happening to, in Whitecroft Manor. Otherwise, the plan as designed does correct that non-conformity and bring it into compliance. So if you consider another option, it would require Whitecroft Manor to do something and a redesign of the Copper Ridge plan.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Jones. Go ahead, I recognize you again.
Again, thank you very much. I'm James Locke. I own Lot 33, which would be one of those two lots in Whitecroft Manor. I have absolutely no opposition to that becoming a permanent cul-de-sac. It's already paved, you know. So it may be perfectly fine for us and it sounds like KB previously had a design that took care of that, where they no longer had the six lots there and the need to connect to Hurst Drive whatsoever. So could we just go back to that? Thank y'all.
Thank you, thank you. Sir, did you wish to speak formally?
I just, we both own the two lots, cul-de-sac here. We're glad that we left.
Okay, we need you to come to the podium if you want to.
Give your name.
Yeah.
George Williams, I'm the owner of, I think that's Lot 32, on the south side of Hurst Drive. Mr. Lock me owns the other lot, which is 33. We essentially let the turnaround be constructed on our property and we would have no problem, if the construction's already done, we'd have no problem deeding the property over to, or turning it over to a right-of-way.
Okay. Thanks, sir.
It may require, a permanent may require a larger turnaround than the temporary turnaround. I don't know those requirements, but there could be additional right-of-way dedication that would be required.
I can answer your question. It was built to DOT standards. The cul-de-sac was a 100-foot circumference. There's no problem at all.
Okay, well.
I could interject. I think that Hurst Drive is too long for a permanent turnaround. I think that the maximum allowed would be 500 feet with a variance for that, I believe, but we can look into it further, but I don't believe that's an option. I think the only feasible option would be looking at some kind of one-way out or one-way-in situation, but that's something that we would have to explore further.
Okay.
And we will look into that before the Planning Commission meeting.
Good, thank you, Ms. Jones, our attorney. Phil, I recognize you.
Thank you, sir. Please stay up there if you would. Mr. Mayor, you know, we run into this quite a bit, I think, about every presentation that comes to us. And being an old country boy, I use the term, I use common sense and I think what traffic's given, but in this case, we're just dealing with this one particular copper ridge. And the common sense thing is to be, because you've got them all over in here, you just have a cul-de-sac there that eliminates the issue on Hurst Drive. That's, that's another story for another time, but to possibly move this project forward, if they were considered going ahead and putting the circle back there like these folks want, it'll remedy the whole problem. We can move on with this project a whole lot easier if we sit here and beat it to death all night. So if that can be worked out, I know there's all kinds of rules you have to deal with, but this is a common sense, easy answer. Just put a cul-de-sac there. They're happy and the people on the other end, they're happy the traffic don't go through there. So if there's a way that can be worked out, let's just get it done.
I'll say this now, we've, as Mr. Matthews mentioned, we've been battling these connections for the last several months, if not year. And so we sat in a long meeting, me and Mr. Vance on the Public Works Committee with our staff. And Ms. Harris mentioned the length, by state law, if you're going to put a cul-de-sac there, there has to be, it has to be a certain length. The street can be too long or too short. And I think what we heard was the street's too long. I'm not the fire, our fire inspector, our golden inspector's here somewhere, but that's the law. If it's going to put the cul-de-sac there and you're going to try to follow what the state fire marshal's department says. I'm not saying that, it sounds simple to me too, I agree, but we thought it sounded simple in some of these other projects we've done too and we've been around and around and around and around on them. So it does sound like a reasonable solution, but I think there's something in the state fire law, fire marshal office that prohibits from doing that. We'll see. Staff will find out and see. Again, it's, you know, if it makes, if it makes good common sense, then there'll be some law that says, well, maybe you shouldn't do that. So apparently that's the case.
Let me recognize, did you have another comment you wanted to make?
Not much, just that, you know, we hear the concerns and we heard the concerns and we are open to other options and we're open to getting rid of that connection. We've done it with one submittal and we're open to doing it again. It's just, I think it really comes down to code and what's allowed and what rules staff will allow us to bend for the project to not make that connection, so.
Thank you for that. David, I'll recognize this one gentleman here and then I want to hear from you.
Yes, sir. Mr. Counselmember, you mentioned that the...
You state your name, sir?
Yes, sir, Zach Brown. You mentioned that the road could be potentially too long for a cul-de-sac. What's the difference between the length of the road with a cul-de-sac versus just a dead-end street?
Our chief building inspector, Mr. Tony Beasley's here and he can answer the question. As good as anybody, about what the law says. I didn't say, we'll let him speak.
Good evening, members of the council. Tony Beasley, Director of Inspections. So what the fire code says is for, I'm not dealing with the zoning UDO requirements. So the maximum dead-end road you can have with a cul-de-sac is 750 feet. The maximum length you can have with a 20-foot wide road is 500 feet. If you wanted it to be 750 feet, then it has to be a 26-foot wide road. And beyond 750 feet takes special permission. And typically, they have to evaluate a lot of things and the cul-de-sac width and diameter and things come in it. But what it defines is that it's not the number of homes, it's the length of road. So 500 feet, the original starts out at 150 and you think you have a dead-end street up to 150 feet. Beyond 150 feet, you got to have either a T-turnaround or a cul-de-sac. Then from 150 feet to 500 becomes a cul-de-sac. 500 to 750 still has the cul-de-sac width, but the pavement width changes drastically from 20 to 26 feet in width. And as y'all had stated earlier, you're a normal DOT, planned-to-be DOT-approved road because it was, as the, our town attorney said, it was platted as a public street. It's just that they've never submitted it to DOT and fixed any deficiencies that they have for DOT to accept it as a public street. So, you know, that's something the HOA needs to consider is to have some engineer evaluate it and see what y'all would need to submit it to DOT to become a public street, which is what it was platted to be, so that your HOA wouldn't have to worry about all the maintenance on it, but there might be too many deficiencies for DOT to accept. I'm not a street judger, but the law for the distances, that's it. So it's after 750 feet to a dead-end road or a cul-de-sac road takes special permission. And typically, we don't have any there that and there's not too many jurisdictions other than some down towards the coast that have done it, but then they have a secondary emergency entrance to that cul-de-sac road. And this road has no stub to it that could connect with a compacted gravel road to support 75,000 pounds to give it that second access. So when we were evaluating this proposal from our technical review committee with all the town departments in it over all the months, whether those town, our houses were up on that upper corner or whether they were relocated, we were looking at a way to interconnect, because we always from life safety look for a way to interconnect, and to eliminate a design that exceeded what the code was. And I mean, you know, I understand Wake County approved that design and there's a lot of designs out there, they approve for years and years and years that didn't meet the codes because they don't involve the same level of plan review that everybody else does. And, you know, in DOT, that might have been a condition for DOT if it was submitted to them to take over for state. I don't know, I can't speak to what they, all they look at in evaluating it, but that's the distances.
Just to be clear, that's state law, 750 feet?
Yes, sir, straight out of the fire code.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you so much. I want to recognize Mr. Banford, who, come forward.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I'd just like to point out that I believe in our UDO, the maximum cul-de-sac length is 200 feet. And then with the Board of Adjustment variance, you can go to 500 feet. So we will be glad to work with the applicant between now and the Planning Commission and see if anything can be worked out or revised on the plan.
Thanks, sir. So good to see you this evening.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the prayers. Thank you.
Okay. All right. I think we've sort of sorted through that. Are you satisfied, Ms. Attorney? Okay. All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. I'm going to close the public hearing and, Council, if you need any further discussions, please keep them brief and then I'll ask you for a motion to refer to the Planning Go ahead. Mr. Challenger.
I have a question. If you clarified what, if any improvements are being done on 1010 Road related to this project? Someone?
Could you repeat the question? Was it, what are the improvements being done on 1010 Road? So at the entrance that we have off of 1010, we'll have a 50-foot turn lane, both eastbound and westbound into the development. And then we'll also be required to have both dedication and improvements. So this was something that we worked through with staff. Because the configuration of this development is a little odd and some of the parcels have been subdivided since those property owners wanted to keep a portion of their land, it's almost like every other parcel that extends up. So we added up the total amount of frontage of those parcels to come up with the amount of frontage that we would provide improvements on. And KB is working with those property owners to work out that right-of-way dedication and improvements on the portion highlighted in green. And then the two areas you see highlighted in blue, those are two of the sellers that they've been working with. So we'll go ahead and provide right-of-way dedication above and beyond what would have been the property frontage for those two parcels.
Can you repeat again what the improvements are? Again, you said 50?
So that will be, the ultimate section for 1010 Road is a four-lane divided road. And so we would be making the improvements for half of that section.
Thank you.
Thank you, okay. Anything else from council?
I have one quick question on the five, yeah, there's a five-feet side setback in there. I know we've, over time, sort of moved towards six, just because it's safer, even though it meets fire code, just having a little bit more space between the homes aesthetically is better, but it also is safer. I'd make that recommendation. They can go to Planning Commission with that recommendation, but I think it's just a, it's a better look and it's also safer than the five feet. That's all.
Okay, thank you, sir. Counselor, are you ready to vote?
A quick question, whether staff can answer or someone from Whitecroft Manor. When was the roads first, when was the road first constructed? There's roads in that subdivision. About 15 years ago. Okay, very good, thank you.
Okay, thank you all. Anything else? Okay, we're ready. Okay, you have the issue before you, Council. What is your pleasure regarding the motion to refer to the Planning Commission?
Move that CZPD 22-02 to be referred to the Planning Commission for their review and recommendation regarding plan consistency.
Thank you, Mr. Vance. Sir, second. Okay, motion properly made and seconded to refer this matter properly to the Planning Commission. If you favor the motion, would you vote aye? Aye. If you're opposed, vote no. Okay, thank you. It'll be referred to the Planning Commission and then it'll come back to this body. You'll all be notified when there's a final hearing on this.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, also, he had mentioned that there was a special permission that could be attained if we could get that information and get that presented with the Planning Commission so that they're aware of what those conditions or permissions are and what those parameters are.
Okay, thank you. All right, those of you who are here for this, excuse me, for this issue, you can certainly stick around if you want to, but if you want to leave at this time, do so quietly. We're going to move to the next item. Ms. Jones, the next item requires a quasi-judicial notice, right?
Mayor, we will not send out another notification.
Thank you for speaking on that.
The tentative meeting would be February the 13th for Planning Commission and we do have the information posted on our website, but we will not send out letters again or post a legal ad on the website.
Okay. I believe your colleague stated the same thing. Yeah, okay, thank you. All right. So the next public hearing will have special use permits require a quasi-judicial hearing. And so I must read these instructions for all concerns. All person wishing to testify or provide comments must be sworn in by the town clerk. If you'd like to make your way over there while I'm finished reading this, that will expedite this next hearing probably. The staff report is offered as evidence in the case and will be accepted into the record unless an objection is raised by the applicant or another person with standing. Each council member is required to disclose whether he or she has a fixed opinion prior to the hearing that is not subject to change or has had any ex parte communications or has any close familial, business or other associational relationship with an affected person or has a financial interest in the outcome of the case. This is a fact-finding hearing and only competent material and substantial evidence that is not repetitive is allowed. Only expert witnesses based on training and experience may testify as to the impacts on property values, traffic safety or noise levels. Council members must disclose any information received or discussions pertaining to the case outside of the hearing. And so, Council, I ask you, do any council members wish to make a disclosure at this time? Okay, seeing and hearing none. We will, I will officially open this public hearing and recognize town staff.
Good evening. I'm here to present the case for a special use permit, excuse me, a special use permit for Catty Road Public Storage, SGP SP 2206. The applicant is PSNC. The owner of the tract at the time of submittal was Marion Hunt, trustee and interior Roland. Since this plan has been submitted, the... Since this plan has been submitted, the, I'm going to say Cambridge, I'm not sure if they have purchased the property, so now that the public storage people own the property now. Sorry. This located, the site is located at 7740 Caddy Road. The tract size is nine and a half acres. Request is to establish a self-storage located at 7740 Caddy Road and can be further identified as PIN number 06990778909. At the time of submittal, the tract was owned service business with conditional zoning 251. And as of July 5th, when we adopted the new UDO, this site has been converted to light industrial with the conditional zoning 251. The overlay district was US 7401 at time of submittal, and that district now has been converted to commercial highway overlay district. The setbacks are for the front 35 feet, rear 025, side 015, and corner will be 35 feet. The neighborhood meeting was held at Calvary Church at 6:30 PM on January 5th this year. There were no attendees. Staff identified 16 properties in the location area, and they were sent out to all of the property owners. And here's an overall picture of the site. This is parking for people to bring in their materials to be stored. Additional parking right here as well. And the entrance to come on in from and go out of Caddy Road. And here's overall pictures of the building elevations. There was no parkland dedication required for this project as this is non-residential Tree coverage required to save, excuse me, required to have 10%. They're preserving 10% of the existing land, I'm assuming, existing landscaping, and they're also adding additional landscaping as well. The street buffers, 15-foot street buffer along Caddy Road, and then perimeter buffers for this project is 35 foot for the western, 15 foot for southern buffer, and 25 foot for the northern buffer. The site lighting meets the requirements of the UDO and staff policies. All fixtures have zero uplight, low glare, with warm light temperature exhibiting no more than 4,000 Kelvin. Parking for self-storage is based on one parking space per 5,000 square feet of floor area. They're required to have 25 spaces, and they're proposing 25 spaces. The inspection department, together with the fire department, has reviewed and approved the plan as proposed. The site does not contain any environmentally sensitive areas on the site. Stormwater management. The Caddy Road Public Storage is a commercial development site that's located within the water section protection area. This site is subject to stormwater quality requirements for nitrogen and 85% TSS removal, as well as water quantity requirements for the one-tier, 1, 10, and 25-year storm events. This development is proposing a wet retention pond for the subdivision. This subdivision is a part of the, I think we already saw, you already saw the project for the Caddy Road EMS station, this project, and then also it's another project that won't come to you all because it's not a special use permit, but just want to let you know the background of this three, of this subdivision that I keep referring to. The device will also satisfy all the water quality and quantity requirements for the site, for the nitrogen 85 TSS removal, and will attain the 1, 10, and 25-year storm events. A nitrogen payment for this subdivision will also be required as a part of this development. For extra structure, the water and sewer, this parcel will be served by the City of Raleigh's Public Water and Sewer Systems. This, excuse me, the proposed Caddy Road Public Storage is a site located off of Caddy Road, just east of 401. Is a part of the small commercial subdivision I just mentioned. This lot, excuse me, the subdivision fronts on both streets of 401 and Caddy Road, but this particular lot just fronts on Caddy Road. US 401 has been widened to have three northbound lanes across the subdivision frontage, with the third lane currently acting as dedicated right-turn lane onto Caddy Road. Curb, gutter, and sidewalk has been installed, too. Caddy Road will be widened to half of the two-lane monicollective section with curb, gutter, and sidewalk. This subdivision lots will be served by internal drives with right-in, right-out drive onto US 401, and have full access driveway onto Caddy Road. A dedicated right-turn lane into the site from Caddy Road will also be constructed. The public storage site will also have access driveway from Caddy Road and the drive from the internal subdivision drive as well. After review and updates to the site plan, the staff finds this project as now proposed may be considered consistent with regulations in the UDO, so long as the following project, site-specific project conditions are met. Prior to the issuance of building permit, payment of inspection fee shall be paid to Town of Garner. The nitrogen offset payment must be paid to approved mitigation bank. The annexation petition shall be submitted to the planning department, and prior to issuance of building permit, the City of Raleigh fees shall be paid as well. That is the end of staff's presentation. I'm here for questions, and I believe the applicant also is here, too. We have questions for them, and I believe they have a presentation as well.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Jones. Counsel, any questions for Ms. Jones? I'll go this side. Anybody? Mr. Singleton? Okay. While you're waiting. Yeah. Mr. Downer?
I'll wait for the applicant, but is this the site, this is the design they want to go with? It's very garish.
Say, this, we used, I'm sorry.
The elevation provided. And I Googled, sitting here Googling, there are much more refined-looking public storage branded buildings. This is, it's not item 401, which I can understand, you want to attract attention. This is off a side street. So maybe they can address that, but I think it's unnecessary.
I will say that, given with this project being located when the, in the US 7401, I think it's called the new commercial highway, I'm sorry if I forget the new overlay district name, it's required to have at least 50% brick, and they are, they do meet that requirement, exceed their requirement.
Mr. Vance? Anything? Mr. Barringer? And Mr. Matthews? And Gray, do you have anything?
That's right.
Okay. All right. And so we'll hear from the applicant at this time.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, Nate Bueller, Cambridge Properties, speaking on behalf of the property owner, here representing the applicant, public storage. Thank you for your time this evening. We can move on to the next slide, please. Our project team consists of myself, Jay Priestor, and Beric Blackburn with Cambridge Properties as well. Our civil engineer for the project, Kim Lee Horn and Associates. Our traffic engineer for the project was Timmons Group. And as I referenced, the underlying user for the project will be public storage. Next slide, please. Over the last 30 years, Cambridge as a whole, we've devoted ourselves to targeting fundamentally good real estate in strong growth markets, and that's exactly what we found here in Garner over the last eight years as we worked with, with yourselves to, to bring together a few of the projects that you see before you on the screen there, both due to the strong economic development initiatives put forth by this body, the new 540 interchange coming just south of the site, as well as the tremendous residential growth in the area. That development process started initially with the Royal Creek Development, which is located in Fuquay Varina, which you can see there on the left side of your screen, which consists of a mix of single-family residential, multifamily residential, and neighborhood-centric retail. We progressed on from there to the Rand Village Costco project, which also includes Starbucks, Chick-fil-A, and Fifth Third Bank. The Caddy Road multifamily development, which you see on the right side of your screen there, which consists of roughly 254 multifamily units. And then the Caddy South retail project, which you see there on the south side with the green star. Next slide, please. Just a bit more on that holistic approach that I referenced, starting with, with Royal Creek specifically, which is located in Fuquay Varina. That project originally consisted of roughly 255 apartments and 160 single-family and townhome units, along with approximately 15,000 square feet of retail space. Rand Village, which I referenced, includes Costco, Starbucks, Chick-fil-A, and Fifth Third Bank. The Caddy Road multifamily project, which you see there on the bottom right side of your screen, which is called Comet Garner, they've actually just recently started leasing for that development here. And then the final piece of this project, Caddy Road South, and the specific parcel that's before you this evening highlighted there and read, the subject property. I think this slide is, is good in, in how it can allow us to highlight some of the work that we've done with both the municipality of Fuquay Varina and CDOT, as well as Garner, in approaching some of the traffic concerns that have stemmed from our approach to this node. Those improvements over the last eight years have included the widening of Lake Wheeler Road, the widening of 10-10 Road, the installation of a traffic signal at Costco on 10-10 Road, the widening of Highway 401, the installation of a new right-turn lane into both the Rand Village Costco Center, as well as the Caddy Road project for both the north and south sides, and then the future signalization of the U-turn bulb that's located roughly 1,500 feet north of the site on the far right-hand side of your screen, and then the future signalization of the protected leftover movement that's directly in front of the Caddy Road project proper. Next slide, please. Wanted to use this slide to highlight a little bit more depth on the off-site improvements that I just referenced for you that have been the result of the four projects that we just spoke to, as well as some more specific notes on the use. You can see there in light orange along the frontage of the property, the right-turn lane along Highway 401. We've completed construction of that last year. That is installed today. In the bright orange, the widening of Caddy Road, that includes a new dual-right movement, as well as the right-turn lane into the site off of 401. That asphalt is actually getting finished this month. The curb and gutter section is in. And then the future pedestrian enhancements for sidewalk connectivity along both sides of Caddy Road to complete the Caddy Road streetscape will be following that, as well as the installation of the traffic signal that you see there at the protected leftover movement. I'll make one other note on that traffic signal and that movement. We have worked with staff, as well as the town, to coordinate for a functional southbound movement for the future fire station and fire truck access coming out of the site from the new fire station that's located just to the right of this plan view, so fire trucks can go over the protected leftover movement and southbound onto 401 in the event of an emergency. With respect to the use, if you recall when we originally came before you a few years ago with this zoning, we rezoned the property to a multifamily designation, and last year rezoned it back to a commercial designation. When we approach projects, we like to approach them with knowledge and with looking holistically at trends and markets that we're operating in. At the time when we originally approached this project, there was a strong need for residential growth and expansion in this area, and in that time, since that initial filing was made, there's just been a tremendous boom of residential growth. That includes the nearly 700 units that we have brought online through both our projects at Royal Creek, as well as Caddy Road North, and then roughly a quarter mile north of this project, the RST project, which is well underway, which will be bringing another 1,000 residential units onboard. So when we approached this refiling last year, we, we took that trend to heart and brought what we felt was a highly complementary use to this market, which is a self-storage, fully enclosed, climate-controlled self-storage facility that's intended to serve as an accretive use to that tremendous boom in residential growth that I referenced. We're seeing a lot of these younger residents in these multifamily projects using a lot of this storage space for outdoor equipment, wine storage, other things that support the lifestyles that they're searching for when they, when they come to some of these newer apartment developments. The other thing that we took to note when we approached the development with self-storage was the ultra-low sewer volume usage, which is well below any of the other commercial uses that you see along Highway 401, as well as the ultra-low traffic impact. The cumulative traffic impact for a self-storage use of this size is less than 30 peak hour trips per day in both AM and PM. So we felt that was accretive to the overall vision we'd had for the project that complements the NCDOT and town-related transportation improvements we brought forth with, with all of the four developments we referenced. Next slide, please. I just wanted to highlight this very briefly. With the completion of the Caddy Road streetscape, which includes the widening I referenced, the installation of additional pedestrian infrastructure for sidewalk on both sides of the road, and completion of that connectivity, that'll allow for a future off-site interconnectivity and walkability for residents back from the McCullers project, from Caddy Road North multifamily, and adjacent retail and residential developments that'll enhance the current condition. Next slide, please. Just wanted to briefly reference the approved zoning conditions from last July that staff shared as well, including 50% masonry on all four sides, as well as commitments that we made to create architectural consistency with the balance of the Rand Village development, which I'll speak to more directly later in this presentation. Next slide, please. As I mentioned, this project is a fully enclosed, climate-controlled self-storage facility. It's roughly 125,000 square feet, three stories of roughly 41,000 square feet each. The project is actually designed as a three-story building. However, the third level is a basement condition, so for a large portion of the Caddy Road frontage, which you'll see in the elevations, the project actually presents as a two-story development. That helps create a better sense of pedestrian scale, as well as mirrors some of the conditions that you see on the multifamily project across the street that we developed on the Caddy Road North site. We also tried to adopt office-like massing elements to help scale appropriately with that project, as well as street screening pedestrian elements to address that scale. Next slide, please. One of the things that we did as we were preparing for this presentation was go to the ordinance, take the findings of fact that you consider in your adoption of this special use permit, and just wanted to speak briefly to each of them. The proposed use shall not address, shall not endanger public health or safety. In our view, it actually greatly increases public safety through the infrastructure and installation of new pedestrian connectivity, the coordination with the fire department for the southbound movement of new fire trucks onto 401, as well as the low-traffic use of a self-storage facility. We feel that this use with relation to property value will actually be accretive to the adjacent properties, which are both multifamily projects, as well as the fire station, and how it can support the needs of the residents that are renting those spaces. We've worked closely with staff to assure that this plan and all of the plans for the overall Caddy Road project are in consistency with the ordinance. We've also worked very closely with staff in, in our discussions with NCDOT, as well as the town, to address transportation concerns with the Caddy Road streetscape, as well as targeting uses that were in line with the intent of the UDO as both, as a mixed-use node here at 401 and 10-10, as well as the commercial center designation. We feel, as I mentioned, that this is a compatible use for the adjacent developments of both the McCullers Walk multifamily, which sits to the south of this property, as well as the Caddy Road North multifamily project. As staff referenced, we are addressing any environmental impacts of the post-development stormwater runoff to equal the pre-development runoff for the 25-year storm condition. We do have access to public safety with the new town fire station directly adjacent to this project to the south, and have worked, as I said, to increase the transportation infrastructure to help offset any adverse effects related to the new trips that we are adding, which are minimal, roughly 30 peak hour trips per day. And we will have, for the overall three parcel development of Caddy Road, a master declaration of easements and restrictive covenants that provides for the ongoing maintenance of all three parcels, as well as the stormwater facility that'll be shared by each of those users. Next slide, please. Staff shared these elevations with you. One of the things I wanted to highlight were some of those office-massing elements that I referenced for the Caddy Road-facing elevation, which you can see there at the bottom of your screen. You can also see that 2-3 basement condition. In the location closest to Highway 401, you actually only will see two stories from the front of the building, and there's actually a basement condition for the third story there. And as you transition down grade-wise, further down Caddy Road, that third story is exposed at the rear of the building. We've also taken the masonry elements that we are using And as you transition down grade-wise, further down Caddy Road, that third story is exposed at the rear of the building. We've also taken the masonry elements that we are using for the Rand Village Costco out parcel development, as well as the other two retail users within the Caddy Road project, and are integrating them here to try to create a sense of architectural cohesion between all parcels involved on both the south and north sides of 401, and feel like that is an important way that we've tried to kind of finish off this piece of the puzzle as we've worked through this project. Next slide, please. Just a couple more renderings and elevations that show some of that transition in grade that I referenced, as well as the branding of the tenant public storage, which was critical for them as we've worked through this process to highlight, but also blend with our overall attempts to coordinate this design with the residential across the street with the Caddy Road Multi-Family, as well as the other retail tenants within the development. Next slide, please. Just a couple more renderings for you there, and then I believe there's one final slide that I just wanted to show as a highlight that speaks to the two masonry colors that we are going to be integrating into the self-storage project. You can see those two brick colors there on both the Starbucks and the Chick-fil-A across the street. Just wanted to highlight that as representative of the quality that you will see when this project is completed. We're here for questions and appreciate your consideration this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let me see if there are questions before you leave the podium. Mr. Matthews, Mr. Singleton, anything?
Still, is there anything you can do with that color palette on all that orange? And I can sit here and Google, and again, if it were sitting on 401 and you want people to see it driving by, you showed Chick-fil-A, you showed Starbucks, they're refined brand representations on those buildings. And I can Google and find public storage as capable, even using non-brick materials to not have that kind of garishness in what is supposedly kind of an upscale apartment community, correct?
That's correct. It is an upscale apartment community. We have worked very closely with them to, quote, "dial back" the orange, as you referenced. It is a critical element for them in their branding and their marketing as they represent themselves in a new market. This is a new market for them. We believe that this is a good balancing act between where we landed with them originally and what we've tried to push very hard for, to allow for integration with the residential projects across the street, but certainly understand and acknowledge your comment.
I mean, I'm the only one that cares. I'm the only one that cares, but I can see that when pushed, apparently, they can do more refined designs that do keep their orange banner, public storage, and then have muted colors down the side, blends better with the environment, blends better with what the slide you showed of other commercial activity there.
Mr. Vance, anything? All right. Thank you, sir, for your presentation. Anything else from the applicant?
No.
Okay. All right, thank you. Ms. Jones, anything else? Okay, we're going to close the public hearing. Counsel, I believe we're ready for a motion, unless you want to discuss this matter briefly amongst yourselves in any fashion. Are you ready to vote?
Mr. Dillinger, a question? You just really want to get rid of the orangish, the loud orangish color, I suppose you're focusing on.
The elevation part that goes all the way to the ground, like I said, if you Google it, you can find other representations where they keep it at the top, but it just, it looks like it should be on Capitol Boulevard, is what it looks like.
What 11 looks like now, sir?
Or 11, or other parts of it.
Anything else, Ms. Jones?
I understand his point, but I see what he's saying, it's loud.
Anything else?
I just want you to see what they're capable of.
Okay.
They can do something more refined and be compatible, meet Condition 5 of the special use permit, compatible with adjacent uses in building sales site design.
Okay, I think everybody's had their say, so I'm going to call for a motion on this particular matter. What say you, counsel?
Mr. Mayor, regarding SUP SP 22-06, Caddy Road Public Storage, I find that application SUP SP 22-06 meets the town's eight criteria for special use permits as identified in Article 3.9.2 D's and Delta. Therefore, I move that the town council approve SUP SP 22-06, Caddy Road Public Storage, with the four site-specific conditions to be listed on the permit that will be prepared by staff.
Okay, thank you. Motion properly made and seconded by Councilmember Behringer. There's not any further discussion?
Mayor, I'd like to make an amendment, that the orange only be contained to the northern quarter of the building.
Okay, Mr. Dillinger requests that the motion be amended to the effect that he just stated. Any other council members?
Again, to the northern, what'd you say?
Northern quarter.
Northern corner, okay.
Well, yeah, come back up, I'll hear from you one more time.
With respect to the orange, does staff mind sharing the elevation again?
Would you just identify yourself for the record?
Nate Bueller, speaking on behalf of Cambridge Properties, the property owner on behalf of the applicant public storage. One of the ways that we could, Councilmember Dillinger, I appreciate your concern, that we could work to dial back some of this orange. Unfortunately, given the tenant's branding considerations, we can't eliminate the orange on the front-facing elevations, but one of the things that we could do along the Caddy Road-facing elevation there with the three-window elements that you see, we could eliminate that entire upper band of orange up to the metal piping along the frontage. So you would just have those three U-shaped orange elements, and then eliminate the band that addresses the balance of the project, other than a small metal piping in orange that would help reduce some of that element that you referenced.
On the Caddy Road side.
Correct. The applicant would be prepared to commit to reducing that band of orange that sits between the three-window elements and goes along the entirety of the Caddy Road frontage up to just a small metallic piping. So that would eliminate roughly, I believe it's about 24 to 36 vertical inches of orange along the entirety of the frontage, save for those three U elements.
Which side's the Caddy Road's? The top one?
Correct.
And so you would just have orange across the top?
It would be the three U's would be orange, the upside-down U's, and then all of that banding that kind of sits between them. We would eliminate that, other than a small piping element that would run along the roofline, which would be orange. So we would eliminate approximately 24 to 36 inches of the orange banding that sits between those three-window elements.
I guess it's, they have the branding, and they can do it in other places, and it's just at the top consistently on other properties. And if I'm driving out of an apartment complex, it's nice, I want to look at something nice. So again, I'd like just the orange at the top part of the building. On the Caddy Road side, on the other side, facing 401, that's fine, because it's, you know, it's more narrow, and there's not much over there.
At this time, I can speak to the applicant being willing to commit to the reduction of orange of that linear area that I referenced that runs along the entirety of the Caddy Road frontage.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, sir. Okay. Mr. Dillinger, are you still supporting amendment that you proposed to the motion?
I mean, I do. I think it just, aesthetically and consistency with the other branding that's done with the other retail and commercial in that area, they've reduced their branding so that it's not jumping out at you. They've demonstrated in other places to have that orange just at the top. I think it's not too much to ask to have Garner have a nice-looking public storage.
As I heard the applicant, I believe, try to accede to some of your observations and make some changes. At any rate, for the amendment to be effective, we have to have, I believe, a second and then a vote.
A second.
Okay. The motion to amend has been properly, is properly for the council, having a motion made and a second. Any council members have a question? We will now vote on the amendment to the main motion. So if you favor the amendment as proposed before you, would you vote aye?
Aye.
Okay, if you're opposed to the amendment, would you vote no? Okay, the amendment passes. So now I believe it's proper for us to vote on the motion with the amendment that you just approved attached to that. So if you favor, if you favor the motion at this time, would you vote aye?
Aye.
Is there opposition? No. Okay, thank you all. The motion has passed, and it is so ordered. Thank you, sir, for your time and diligence, and I want to thank town staff for your work on this as well. Counsel, it's essentially nine o'clock. We've got a couple of other matters at least to take care of. I don't think the next one will take too long, but is Mr. Griner here, or is he?
Yes, he's available.
Would you like to, let's go ahead and hear from him. I don't think it'll take too long. Someone recognize Mr. Griner for the next item of business. Thanks, sir, for being here.
Good evening. Town count, the inspection department is here tonight requesting an ordinance to be enacted to enforce the demolition of a structure located at 4506 Jones Sausage Road. The structure has been, through the process that's required to, and an order has been issued, which the property owner has been noncompliant on. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Okay, yes, thank you. Questions for Mr. Griner, this side of the dais? None? Okay, Mr. Vance?
How soon?
I second that question.
Soon as we can get on the demolition guy's schedule after we get everybody's blessing.
Okay, we gotta get there first, but I guess we will. Anything here, Mr. Singleton?
You realize that if this passes, you better run out of the room, because she shouldn't come and hug your neck.
He's not going anywhere.
I might meet her in the middle.
Mr. Matthews? Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Griner. This is a public hearing, so if there's anyone here who wishes to speak to this issue, would you let it be known now? Raise your hand, or we'll invite you to come to the podium. Okay, seeing and hearing none. You didn't have anybody else who was planning to present anything, right? Yeah, okay. All right. I'm going to close a public hearing then and call for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt ordinance 2023-5170.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded properly. If you favor the motion, please vote aye.
Aye.
Is any opposition no? Okay, and it's so ordered. So let's see, we need to immediately take action under new and old business in conjunction with this. Item one, are you presenting on that? Where's Mr. Griner? Oh, there he is, I'm sorry. Having to do with a budget amendment, I believe, or a...
I think that would be finance, or is that right, Terry?
So Finance has presented a budget amendment in your packet because there's not a dedicated line item to demolitions, and then in conjunction with that, or you could do two separate votes, would be approval of the contract for the demolition contractor.
What say you, counsel?
So in front of us, there are, as soon as if we adopt the ordinance that we just adopted, we need to consider the approval of service contract with corporate group and consider adopting the other ordinance. So that's what we need to do, and then something else? Then the budget amendment?
The budget amendment is that second ordinance, 5178, and then approval of the contract.
So we can just do that in one motion?
Yes.
So moved?
Okay, properly moved and seconded.
Any question? Everybody understands? Okay, if you favor that motion, would you please vote aye?
Aye.
Okay, opposition, no? Okay, there is none. I think that's everything we need to do on that item, right?
Right, it will come back to you once the demolition is complete. We'll come back to you to get a resolution assessing the costs, and then those costs will be placed as a lien on the property.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you, thanks so much, Mr. Griner, and your department there, everybody with you, okay? All right, I'm going to call for about a 10-minute recess at this time. It's a little after nine o'clock. We'll try to be back and finish the agenda, coming back at no later than 9:15 during the recess. the recess. Call us back into session and the, and the mayor will acknowledge that he was the one that got started late, so not keeping over the time so well. But here comes Mr. Vance, so maybe I can blame it on him, okay? Okay. All right, we'll move right along, sure enough. Let's see, I believe we are at item number two under new and old business, am I right? Uh, and Ms. Harris is presenting on this, so go right ahead, Ms. Harris.
This is Burnett Farms Conditional Zoning CZMP 2201. This case has been before you previously for a public hearing and it has also gone to Planning Commission. The applicant is Madison Holding LLC and the owners are Burnett Farms LLC. The location is along Auburn Knightdale Road and the tract size is 45.02 acres. It is part of a larger parent tract that had a total of 180 acres and this is just 45 acres of that tract. It is a tier two conditional rezoning, which is a master sketch plan with written conditions to conditionally rezone the 45 acres from single-family residential 20, which is now R2, to master plan multifamily B MFBC 258 conditional for the development of a maximum of 475 units, 350 units max and 125 townhome units max at 10.5 units per acre. There are use restrictions along with architectural conditions and amenity conditions proposed. So as I said, the site is located along Auburn Knightdale Road. It is directly adjacent to Auburn Village and then to the east you can see Rock Quarry Road and then just north is Wall Stewart Road. The adjacent land use and zoning to the north, it is RA, Rural Agricultural Single Family, to the south, R2, to the east, R2, and to the west, a PD, uh, conditional district four, which is Auburn Village. The proposed conditions, so below you see the permitted use table, so they have limited to just two of the permitted uses, townhouse and multifamily, including apartments. Stormwater control measures will be in, uh, closed in a commercial-grade black aluminum picket fencing. The multifamily apartments will include the following amenities, a clubhouse with a health club totaling 6,000 square feet, a pool, sun deck and grilling area totaling a minimum of 2,500 square feet, play lawn and other outdoor gathering spaces, a landscaped dog park with seating. The apartments will be subject to architectural conditions, so the permitted primary exterior building materials will be brick veneer or similar masonry, masonry products, stone, manufactured stone stucco or cementitious siding or a combination thereof. The masonry component will be a minimum of 20% per each building. Vinyl may not be used as an exterior building material. And there will be offsets in the plane of each facade for each apartment building provided. There will also be hips and, um, on the primary facade, on the front and rear, shall have hip accents with roof planes that vary from primary roof plane. The primary front or rear facades addressing, uh, public streets shall not contain breezeway openings with visible stairwells and the project will include a mix of building types. The townhouse units shall include a landscaped dog park as well, separate from the apartment's dog park. It shall be a minimum of 2,000 square feet with seating to accommodate up to six people. The townhouse units will have the following architectural conditions, um, two-foot horizontal offsets in the front and rear planes of each building, every second unit. Each unit shall have at least a 12 by 20 garage, which will be front-loaded, front-facing, paneled with garage har, carriage hardware and windows, um, from building to building. Vinyl siding will not be prohibited, however vinyl windows and decorative elements will be allowed. A minimum of 20% of the front facade of each unit shall be masonry, stone, brick or veneer. Townhouse units shall have turned down slab or stem wall construction with 12 inches exposed on front. Front and sides shall be clad with brick or stone veneer and a continuous wing scoting. Rear shall have paint to cover exposed concrete. Articulation in the side elevations shall include side entry doors and two or more windows. Gable ends to have a horizontal bandboard at the attic floor level with a different pattern or color of siding above and below the bandboard. And first floor glazing shall consist of front doors with windows, side lights and/or transoms. They have committed to eight-inch minimum eaves and rakes on front, rear and sides. And the townhouse units shall have covered entry porches or stoops. The front-loaded townhouse units will have at least a 10 by 10 rear patio. And the townhouse units with rear yards along Auburn Knightdale Road shall have enhanced landscaping. So as I said, the total project area is 45 acres. The lot max in MF2 generally is a 5,000 square foot of development area for the first unit and then an additional 3,000 feet of development area for each additional unit. The master plan proposes a maximum total of 475, so 125 max townhomes and 350 max apartment units. So the setbacks for the townhouses, the minimum lot width will be 18 feet with a 25-foot front setback and a zero or 15-foot side setback and a rear setback of 20 feet. The building separation is 30 feet or the triangulation method. And for the apartments, the minimum lot width is 60 feet with a front setback of 35, a side setback of 15, a rear setback of 25 and a corner side setback of 25. The building separation is also 30 feet or the triangulation method. So here you can see the project master plan. So to the north corner, you see the wetland area and tree preservation that is proposed. There are also a number of SCMs on site as well as the existing pond to the south. The apartment, um, area, which is just north of Auburn Knightdale Road. And then they have their own separate amenities, including the pool area that's shown, um, with townhomes kind of surrounding, acting as a buffer between the Auburn Village and the multifamily. And so you can see that there is also a perimeter buffer as well as, um, a road, which helps to additionally buffer between Auburn Village. And so they have also proposed vegetation, including street trees, as I said, tree preservation and beyond. So this, uh, project previously came to you for a public hearing on November 22nd. There were comments in favor of the development by some neighbors and there were also comments in opposition by some neighbors. Comments in opposition were regarding traffic and being inconsistent with surrounding density. There was also conversation about the lack of commercial component in this phase. However, you voted to send it to, um, Planning Commission to a vote of five to zero. So consistency of the request, staff has determined that this is consistent with the Garden Forward Plan of the Mixed Activity Center, which emphasizes complimentary land uses that collectively create comprehensive, connected living lifestyle approach to working and shopping in close proximity. And the future land use map also, um, we added a note that while the proposed development of a residential community at approximately 10.5 acres is consistent with the higher densities recommended in the MAC designation around the future 540 interchange in this area, the lack of other land use components at this time helping to ensure a comprehensive, connected lifestyle approach to connect living, working and shopping in close proximity is a valid cause for some concern. However, it should be noted that there remains over 100 acres and I believe the exact calculation is 135 acres within this area to accommodate for those uses. So this project is consistent with the transportation point and will have two points of access on Auburn Knightdale Road. Additional turn lanes will be added at the project site in addition to the intersections at East Garner Road and Rock Quarry Road. A two-line north-south collector is also being... A two-line north-south collector is also being constructed in keeping with the new road rage plan recommendations and portions of a recommended public greenway along the Northern Creek Draw are also being built. Pavement widening, curb, gutter and sidewalks will also be required along Auburn Knightdale Road frontage. And with these improvements, the project will be considered consistent with the transportation plan. The Parks and Recreation and Cultural Resources Plan, the site is not designated within the Parkland Search Area, but the Big Branch and Auburn Greenway corridors do traverse the site. With portions of the recommended public greenway going along the North Creek Draw being built and the sidewalk requirement along Auburn Knightdale being upgraded to a 10-foot asphalt side path, the proposal may be considered consistent with the PRCR master plan. So this meeting went to Planning Commission on December 12th of 2022 and there was some discussion between the commission and some public who spoke at the meeting. Topics discussed were peak traffic hours, the turn lane off of Auburn Knightdale Road, the size of the units and the number of bedrooms per housing product, tree preservation, the proposed amenity spaces, how the neighbors were engaged with this project and what kind of traffic calming could be introduced to the area. The Planning Commission reviewed the request. However, they found that on a vote of three to three, that the plans were neither inconsistent nor consistent. So I guess that determination would be left to you in your final motion, but staff's recommended statement was to rezone, was to, that the request was considered consistent. So staff recommended consistency, however Planning Commission found it to be neither consistent or inconsistent. So your charge tonight is to determine the reasonableness and then also to consider what the Planning Commission said and then how this may be considered in sections of the Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan, providing guidance on keeping with the town's character, living spaces, working places, recreation opportunities and transportation. Other adopted town plans and policies providing guidance on parks, greenways, cultural resources and more may be served as sources as well. In addition to the findings of planned consistency, staff would note that the following in support of a motion to approve CZMP 2201 as presented. The location is within a half mile of the Future 540 interchange, which may support higher densities and non-residential development in keeping with the MAC designation. And townhomes are not just adjacent to single-family detached homes, but also serve as a transition along with the parrot homes in the adjacent Auburn Village subdivision. So the recommended motion is on your worksheet on page 301 of the packet. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. Counsel, questions for this presentation? Very good. Any down here? None down here? So let's see, are we hearing further from the applicant?
They are here to answer questions if you have any.
Okay, all right. What's your pleasure, counsel? Any questions for the applicant? They're here, had a chance to speak to them at the break. Okay. All right, go ahead. Who is going to answer questions from my council member? Okay.
Good evening, counsel. Beth Blackman with Simmons Group, 5410 Trinity Road, Suite 102 Raleigh. I'm available to answer questions or we have the developer, it depends on kind of what the questions are.
Just curious as to why there is no commercial component to the project. This is, this occurred on the 401 project as well with a mixed-density neighborhood center, which there's some wordsmithing that can be done to say, well, it's nearby, but the Mixed Activity Center, future land use designation is very, very specific about having integrated working, living, shopping in close proximity. And there's no other shopping or retail in the vicinity to reference as like around 401. And I'm just, my concern is this parcel will get pushed off to be multifamily. Now you've got another smaller parcel, we'll come back with another smaller parcel that'll be mixed-use, I mean multifamily. And then it's like, well, then you've not left with enough land to actually fit the future land use plan in this right next to 540, which will be one of our major arteries. So my question is, why is there not consistency with our future land use plan when pursuing this rezoning?
So I'm going to let the developer answer some of that, but I will say in staff's additional statement as well that ensuring in the future that future rezonings with this would have a large commercial component is very reasonable and something that would be easy to accommodate, that anything in the future would not be approved without commercial. But this gets you some additional residential in the area that really doesn't have a lot of residential or commercial. I mean Auburn Village and Edge of Auburn are coming in and you have Raleigh development to the northwest, but it's, a lot of it is also farmland and looks like this, what this looks like today. And I'll let the developer add to as well.
Sure. Daniel Smoot for Madison Holding, Councilman Bellinger. We appreciate your question about the future commercial uses. I would say this is, just to reiterate what Ms. Harris presented, this is 45 acres of a larger piece of property that we see as an opportunity to develop for residential now. The process of doing a conditional rezoning and saying this is where we're going to put townhomes, this is where we're going to put apartments, that process is something that we can meet for the residential uses that we put forward, but at this time it's premature to put forward commercial uses today. We need more rooftops to support commercial use in this area and we've been very specific. If you notice, our plan has a rotary and we've reserved this, you know, 20-acre parcel on the corner at a very important intersection of Auburn Knightdale and Rock Quarry Road that the current owner, you know, has a larger vision owning all four corners of that intersection on both the Raleigh side and Garner side to do, you know, future commercial uses there. But the process is if we could rezone, you know, 20 acres for commercial and not have it be condition or site plan specific, that that process is something that, you know, maybe is a path that we could go down, but the path that we've worked with staff on for a long time was to say, what could we get approved now? And then as demand is there for a commercial use, we would come back and present again before you and say, this is what we think, or the property owner would come back and say, this is what we think future phases of this project would be. But, you know, being very deliberative and saying, you've got a 55 and older community that's established right next door, transitioning, transitioning, this is just a first phase of what we'd like to see as a bigger development.
I guess you half answered my question, the other, it really was, but there are no plans in, here in the town for commercial there, but our future land use map says when this is developed, it should include it. Maybe it's not the right time because maybe we should wait until you have a larger plan that could be phased in over time that's more comprehensive. I just read an article, they're doing a town, a project in Clayton off of 42 that's mixed-use, 300 townhomes, 300 apartments, and that's in Clayton and there's retail component there. There are enough rooftops in Garner to support commercial there. There are. You have Aversboro Shopping Center right in the middle of town, low density. Those businesses are always active and full. So I guess I understand this is what you can get approved now, but is it what Garner needs in the future?
I think this is what Garner needs now and I respectfully, you know, I appreciate your consideration and I take on board your feedback, but this is the plan that we put forward and we appreciate your consideration of it.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Vance, anything? Anybody else? Anything? Okay. Okay, town's finished? Okay. Okay, this is not a public hearing, so public comment does not have to be accepted at this Perhaps I'll allow one person, is that your purpose? You want to speak?
Yes, we would like to speak on this too. Correct.
I'll have one person do that, it's not required for the hearing, if you want to do that, but keep your comments brief if you will, please.
My name is Kristin Murphy. My address is 185 Ivory Lane in Garner. I'm speaking on behalf of a number of people within Auburn Village community, of which I am a part of, regarding this plan. First and foremost, thank you for the opportunity to speak. It's, I know every time we get to this in our town council meetings, it seems like we've run out of time by the time it comes to a lot of the public comment. I'd like to thank Councilman Bellinger for his thoughtful deliberations on this and consideration. I 100% agree and support that, to say that there's not enough rooftops in the area with the thousand homes that have already been approved with Edge of Auburn and Auburn Station to me is crazy with R300 plus everything that's there and the closest grocery store is four miles away currently for people in that area, if not farther. So I agree that it needs to be considered all at one time to ensure it's the right development for the entire space, not just one at a time. You're pushing it off to the owners of Burnett Farms and future council members to try and make it right when you piecemeal it like this and there's no guarantee that the other acreage won't be piecemealed as well. And then you're going to potentially risk having a non-congruent area in a very critical area in part of Garner. I also would like to point out that, you know, one of the things is to have congruency in it, to have homes on Azure or Desert Sand Lane within, you know, 50 yards of three-story apartment buildings. I understand the townhome is a buffer, but still to look out my back window, and it's not me personally, but for those residents to look out their window, they'll be able to see the three-story apartment building only 50 yards away. And I think that isn't necessarily congruent with how everything should be staged and developed and what the future land use plan is looking for. I also wanted to make note of the traffic and road conditions and bring up that topic again on page 289 of the agenda for tonight. The traffic study that was completed in March of '22 and the site plan that's listed there has incorrect information on what the intersection of Garner, or I'm sorry, Auburn Knightdale and Rock Quarry roads have. It currently shows turn lanes on Rock Quarry in both directions to go onto Auburn Knightdale and those turn lanes don't exist. It's currently a four-lane intersection and this proposal is only adding a right turn lane from Auburn Knightdale to turn onto Rock Quarry. So you're adding one turn lane in an intersection that has 800 homes, two miles down at Edge of Auburn, and what's proposed is another 450 units right where we are, plus the 200 down the road. So to add one right turn lane in this project is not sufficient for the amount of traffic on there and it doesn't, so I just wanted to make sure you are aware that that intersection is not listed correctly on that map. That is an incorrect listing. They're also only adding two right turn lanes from Garner Road, East Garner Road, onto Auburn Knightdale. So the traffic that's just trying to go straight across East Garner Road from Auburn Knightdale in either direction backs up all the time because they can't turn left. This isn't going to address that either. Another...
Ma'am, are you just about finished?
Well, let me bring, let me bring up like two other, one, a couple of other points I think are important.
Be as brief as possible.
You know, it was said tonight in the presentation that the vote with you, with the town council was five to oh last time. As I attended the meeting, I'm confident and as I rewatched the video, that Councilman Bellinger voted no against that, so I'm not sure why it was presented as a 5-0 vote to the Planning Commission when they considered it, when he was a no vote and I was here and again rewatched that. So I think that wasn't fair to the Planning Commission to make sure that they got the full story of the concerns that were being addressed and raised at the last town council meeting. And if I guess that's all that I have before I could say, but if you're saying I'm out of time, then I'll respect that and I appreciate the time.
Well, I was...
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
The other thing that I didn't mention was just the infrastructure for the safety and emergency management with those two roads, right? Trying to get emergency vehicles to us, there's no sides for them to go around when the traffic is backed up. The safety of our neighborhood, these neighborhoods being developed, we need to have the infrastructure and the number of people and staff of the town of Garner to support this. In addition to just the roads being able to support the emergency vehicles being able to get to us. And in these plans, that's not. It would be very challenging and very concerning for two 55-plus communities located on Auburn Knightdale that emergency vehicles might not be able to get to them in a timely fashion because of the traffic, that the already approved projects will create and then this on top of it. Oh, and last but not least, I did have one other thing that I wanted to say. The site plan and the master plan that you're seeing now shows 96 townhomes when they're asking for 125 in their rezoning request. And it shows with those 11 apartment, apartment buildings, and I've been told in the past that each building would have 24 to 30 apartments, that's only 264 to 330 apartments, but they're asking for 350. My concern is if you approve the density that they're requesting now and those maximums, that that site plan could be totally redesigned because we're giving them the approval to add up to 30% more townhomes and additional apartments than what they're showing in that design for us.
Okay, thank you very much. And the attorney can correct me if I'm wrong on my statement. The brevity that I've asked for doesn't have anything to do with the timeframe, the way these hearings are structured, we have public hearings and the public is invited to come and speak at those. These hearings are not designed for public input per se. I decided to do that as a courtesy to you for coming here this evening and I appreciate your interest, but so that's the reason...
Thank you and I do appreciate you letting me speak tonight. I was here at the first town council meeting and you had to cut off here comments because of time and to get to other things on the agenda. So I did try and come and speak previously, but was not able to with, you know, as you were trying to continue the process, so...
Maybe so. I'm a pretty indulging person, so it's seldom that I cut off speaking like that, but maybe I did at that meeting, but thank you anyway. Okay. Okay, I believe we are ready. Counsel want to discuss this matter amongst yourselves before voting? Now would be a good time to do that. Anything, Phil?
No, ready to do it.
Okay. Mr. Singleton, anything?
I know, sir.
Okay. Ms. Bellinger.
I do have some concerns about the lack of commercial development in this, in this project, in that area, and putting it off to saying, well, we'll get to it later, that gives me some concern. I don't have a problem with the design and the plan here, but not having the commercial component in it is a little bit concerning to me.
Okay. Mr. Vance, I sometimes hold him for last.
No questions at this time.
Okay. Mr. Bellinger, recognize you, sir.
Yeah, it's very, it's very rare that we get from the Planning Commission a split commission, where half are like, it means that the other half aren't. And I think some of that stems from the time we as council and Planning Commission have invested in our character and land use process whereby we are taking a more critical and fiscally responsible view of how we're growing and where we're growing. And I think we should give weight to that because I, we have to think about our growth a little bit differently. We have to adhere to decisions we make on the larger scale. We have to adhere to decisions we make on the larger scale, our future land use map, and when those items come before us, that should take precedent for us because those are strategic decisions. This is a tactical insertion of residential, but we have larger strategic interests in the town when it comes to our tax base and utilizing our transportation networks properly, knowing that 540 is going to be there, and not jumping the gun and developing something that's not going to make the highest and best use of that. I think the, the number one thing the consultant has said to us is, "You can wait." And to me, this is another example of, "We'll get something better in short order," I think, "if we wait, if they take a more comprehensive approach to this parcel of land to get the real highest and best use, not for just the developer, but also for everyone in Garner." So that, I'll be voting against it on the simple fact that if it's inconsistency with the land use plan, if we wanted to push it to another meeting and have more discussion or send it back to Planning Commission, we could do that, but we have to make those decisions. So...
Okay, thanks, sir. I believe I've heard from everybody. It is, it's a little unusual for the Planning Commission to have a split vote. We don't see very many of those. But beyond you, beyond that, excuse me, the manner is before you this evening, counsel. And so I'm going to call for a motion at this time. And Mr. Dellinger, I guess, I don't know if you were formally proposing, but you'd said something about referring it back to the Planning Commission. What was, what was your reasoning?
Either they could help them incorporate some commercial elements to the project or hold it and try to get something more comprehensive on the other zoning of the rest of the property. I think that's the other issue, is there are thoughts on what the rest of it could be, but without having the guarantee of that other rezoning, we don't really know what's going to go there. So I would, it's a, it's a start, it's a good start, but I think there could be more work done on this project, and I'll, I'll make the motion to send it back to Planning Commission to revise it, but...
Okay, that's your motion at this time?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Unless there is a second from counsel, then that motion will, will die as a result of the lack of... So...
Mayor, and while we're having a discussion here, I do have concerns about the mixed-use activity center as well as to the timing of it, as to the, just because, just the planning for and, and having that plan in mind, because key points have been made that's in proximity of 540, and it also has been mentioned by, by the developer that there are considerations but as to when because of currently, from their perspective, not enough rooftops to support, to support mixed-use activity center right now. However, the thought process of looking at where, possibly where it can be and how we could designate a position for, for the future, that is a concern to mind at this moment.
I think there's more work that needs to be done. I know that's a broad statement, but it's just, doesn't seem complete.
Yeah, Mr. Matthews?
Let me comment. I've ridden out there and looked at this area, very familiar with it, and that entire intersection, you don't have to worry about the commercial aspect. It's going to be there. You've got 540 coming through there. That intersection just to the other side of it there, time this project even gets started would not surprise me to see a big commercial development, because they're going to come. And so, you know, postponing this to force that in, I don't think that is our responsibility. I think our responsibility is to approve this project as is, it's a very good project, and we all agreed on to it before, and sent it to Planning Commission, but the commercial aspect, it's going to be out there. It's coming. It's just, it's call-free enterprise. They're going to come where the customers are at, and they're going to be out there. And to hold off a project only for that one reason, that just does not make any sense. I can assure you, the business is going to be out there, the 540. There's some other places up there that we looked at some time back, and they held corners all it for commercial applications, so they know it's coming. So I'm prepared to vote on it, and let's not hold it back on waiting on commercial because it's going to be there. It will be there.
Any other comments right now on the floor?
And yes, and yes, the commercial will come. Here, here's something that people missed. No one up here and no one in the audience, no disrespect to y'all, are developers. We've been trying to get another grocery store in Garner for 15 or 20 years. I know Mr. Barta from White Oak, I know Mr. Jurgen, the property owner. I've met with him dozens of times. You don't see another grocery store down there, do you? Even though we all love to have one. Kroger closed, nothing, nobody replaced them. Now we are getting one, they're working on it, but it's easier said that there's not enough rooftops. Think of the thousands of rooftops that are in a circle around there, and there's not one there. They put one by market research, and that's how they put it, where they will plant a store there or any other business. It's going to come. 540 is the next leg. It's not supposed to start construction until '28, so the set, this leg of 540, I'm sorry. So it might get done by, you know, in seven, eight years if it stays on schedule, hopefully. We'll see. I have no trouble with what's being proposed. There'll be, there'll be commercial and retail activity there. It will come. You know, you have to have more rooftops. I mean, if we took what everyone has said tonight, we would have never approved Auburn Village, based off all the comments that have been said, and some of the people who've been living down there for most of their lives told us that, so I have no problem. The commercial supposedly knows what they're doing, and they'll come somewhere and place, well, it's a grocery store, whatever. Yes, my wife would love another grocery store, let me assure you. She's not the only person in Garner, but commercial will follow eventually. You know, one day, there might be commuter rail down, excuse me, not computer, commuter rail, I'm sorry, down that area. We don't know. It will eventually come. You have to have more residential, and I understand this has some, such a wet, wet, so many wetlands and existing ponds, the way it's developed, it looks like a reasonable project, and the apartment buildings, I mean, per square foot, they're the highest rated per square foot tax, tax value property in Winnebago County, so there's pluses and minuses there. I had no trouble with cornerhead approving the project. I had no troubles, I said at the last meeting, knowing Mr. Bell and his family and how they developed Garner, the same way, the four corners, the areas where it timbered were woods for years and years and years until Heather Hills and Heather Woods and all that came around, then the commercial came, like they said. I mean, I've lived here so many years, I know all that. So I had no trouble with moving forward, voting on it, and proceeding. If then we'll put it to a vote, and it passes, it passes, it gets beat, it gets beat.
Okay, thank you all for your comments, well-stated. Before, currently, is, is the motion by Mr. Dellinger to take this back to...
The motion failed. There's no second on that.
Well, that's, that's what I was about to pronounce. This was part of that discussion, and so that motion did fail as a result of no second. So now, counsel, before you, is the time to consider another motion, or in my view, the motion that is proposed before you and recommended by staff.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the town council accept the Planning Commission's written statement regarding consistency of the zoning amendment requests with adopted land use plans detailed in Section 6 of the staff report as our own, and I further move that town council adopt ordinance number 2022-5177 approving rezoning CZMP-22-01 as a request is reasonable in the public interest because it will likely promote multifamily housing in select areas and provide attractive and pedestrian-friendly streetscapes that will communicate with small-town feel and human scales, and be located and designed to create good multifamily places with quality exterior materials, open places, and facades.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Matthews.
Can I recommend one change? Technically, the Planning Commission did not make any recommendations of removing that language and just making your own finding on consistency with the master plan.
No, no, do you?
I'm fine with that, man.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, counsel, the motion is properly before you this time. We discussed it, heard different viewpoints.
Robert's rules.
Go ahead.
And just a final comment. I understand Mr. Matthews and Mr. Singleton's points, and the commercial can only go where there's room for commercial to go, and there are parts of Garner that we've, that have been rezoned that could have been commercial, that the opportunity has been lost. Ms. Barringer makes the point that you can, it's not a fully fleshed vision, and we can hope or we can plan, and I prefer planning, so I'll be voting against this tonight. Thank you, sir.
All right. Okay, counsel, what is your pleasure? The motion is before you. If you approve the motion, would you please vote aye?
Aye.
If you're opposed to the motion, would you please vote no?
No.
Okay. Chair declares that the motion passes on a vote of four to one, I believe. And the manner is so ordered. Thank you all for your time and indulgence. I wish you well with this. Hopefully, it'll work out very well. So, thank you all for coming. Okay, we're going to go to item three, I believe it is, under new and old business, and I would mention to you that...
You go back.
Let's see, we, we haven't yet voted on the rezoning...
The annexation.
Excuse me, the annexation. That's right, okay. Yeah, this is the zoning portion of it.
Right. I would recommend you discuss the zoning and, and then take the two votes.
Okay. All right. So, Mr. Bowie, you're presenting on this matter, is that right?
Yes. Tonight, I'm going to present CZ2206, 5907 Fayetteville Road Conditional Zoning Amendment. The applicant is 401 South LLC. The owner is 401 South LLC. Property is located at 5907 Fayetteville Road. The tract size is 5.37 acres. This is a Tier One request submitted to rezon approximately 5.37 acres from Highway District, which is Wake County, to Light Industrial LIC 268 Conditional District. Architectural and use conditions offered for townhome development. This is a Tier One conditional rezoning request, which means there is no site plan or specific development proposal at this time. The reason for the request is to connect to public water. Because this is outside of Garner's ETJ, a rezoning is required along with an annexation petition to connect to public utilities when coming in from outside the ETJ. Here's an aerial view of the location. Here you have adjacent zoning and land use, which is all Wake County, except to the west, you have Light Industrial, which is vacant. It was Arvin Tractor Service and Insulating Incorporated. Existing zoning summary, Highway District, Wake County, the current use of the property is retail and residential. Proposed zoning of 5.37 acres is Light Industrial LIC 2C268 Conditional. The Light Industrial zoning district is intended to provide for a limited range of low-intensity industrial uses that are not noxious or offensive due to odor, smoke, dust, noise, fumes, or vibration. Operations are restricted to inside the building with outdoor stores prohibited. Here you have a list of proposed, proposed uses for the property, but I will remind you that the applicant is not changing the use, the current use of the property. Overlay notes, the property is located outside of Garner's ETJ, and is such is not located in the town of Garner overlay districts. If annexed and rezoned into the town of Garner, the property will be located within the commercial highway overlay. The commercial highway overlay applies to the entire length of US 70 and US 401 located within Garner zoning jurisdiction. The rezoning site is subject to additional standards of this overlay district should some development at some point in time occur on the property. Town council conducted a public hearing back in November of this year. The staff presented the case. There weren't any comments or opposition to the request, and this case was sent to the Planning Commission and closed. Consistency of the request, relevant land use plan analysis. The plan is, well, the request is consistent with the 2018 Garner Ford Plan. The site is designated as Neighborhood Commerce Center, and the Neighborhood Commerce Center generally is located at intersections of collectors, highways, and arterial, emphasizes smaller commercial centers that are within close, close walk-in proximity of residential uses. Typical mix of uses would include retail sales, service, convenience stores, restaurants, and uses that share a common parking area or may have a small anchor such as a grocery store. The proposed use would be a continuation of the existing use recommended by the NCC designation. Here's another map of the site. Consistency of the request, the Planning Commission held their meeting on December 12, 2022. On a vote of six, six zero, the Planning Commission moved to accept staff consistency statement and recommend approval to town council. Consistent statement, the Planning Commission finds this request to rezon 5.37 acres from Highway District to Light Industrial LIC 268 is consistent with the 2018 Garner Ford Plan's designation of Neighborhood Commerce Center and recommends approval. Staff commentary, while this request is consistent with the Garner Ford Comprehensive Plan, staff believes a reasonable case can also be made for supporting the request. Reasons the town council may wish to discuss in addition to their own are, number one, the request does not seek to significantly change the zoning or the use pattern of the property, and the request is to rezon is to connect to public water. And here's a statutory directive to, for, which I won't bore you with again. Staff recommends CZ, staff support CZ2206, recommends town council approval of the staff finding on consistency as stated in Section 5 of this report, and further recommends approval of the zoning map amendment request as a reasonable one, and you can refer to the following motion worksheet, and staff recommendation is highlighted in green.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Bowie by counsel? I believe since we didn't vote on the annexation, that the idea was to, we could tie them together, but I'm going to suggest we vote on each one individually, I guess, and vote, first of all, on this zoning request, and then we'll go back and consider the annexation. Okay? So what is your pleasure on the, on this issue, counsel?
I move that the town council accept the Planning Commission's written statement regarding consistency of the zoning amendment requests with the adopted land use plans detailed in Section 5 of the staff report as our own, and I further move that the town council adopt ordinance number 2023-5176 approving zoning, rezoning CZ22-06 as, as the request is reasonable in the public interest because it will likely reflect a significant change in conditions or support a public policy established by the town since the adoption of applicable land use plans.
Thank you, Mr. Vance. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay. Motion properly made and seconded. Any other question, counsel, before we vote? All right. If you are in favor of the motion, would you please vote aye?
Aye.
If you're opposed to the motion, would you vote no? Okay, motion passes. Okay, motion passes on a vote of five oh. And now we will go back to, I believe it's item three on the annexation.
Move to adopt annexation ordinance twenty twenty-three five one seven four.
Second.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Vance and Mr. Singleton. So the motion is properly for you for approving the annexation. If you favor the motion, would you vote aye?
Aye.
Aye.
If there's opposition, no. Okay, and it's so ordered. So, thank you for letting us kind of take care of those two matters the way we did there. Excuse me, I'm turning pages. I believe that covers all the items on our regular agenda. We're down to committee reports. Did I miss anything? Okay, thank you for being here. Okay, any committee reports this time?
Not at, not at this time, but in the near future, we will be coming back with a committee report from HR.
All right, and Public Works hasn't met, okay, all right. Okay, thank you for that update. All right, manager report, Mr. Dixon.
Yes, we got a, a couple of reports dealing with financial status and project status, and then we got the talk of the town. We got staff here, I imagine we're going to continue with those, hopefully make it brief since it's late, but still give you the adequate information. So first, it's Leah and David are going to cover the capital project update. That would be the large sheet with the yellow highlighting on it.
Okay, good to see you. Thanks for waiting.
Of course. So I will start with project updates from a project perspective, and then David is going to chime in as well on some of the, the financial pieces, so we'll, we'll tag team this a little bit here. So what you have, and I'm sure you are pretty familiar with seeing this at this point, but is the status of the capital projects that we currently are working on. Kind of a big picture update, it's been a couple months now, but we haven't done this update since. We do have our new two project managers on board with us in the engineering department. So that is, you know, spurring some, some changes in, in how we do things on capital projects in a positive way, of course. We have dedicated people working on, on those. One of those was a current employee who was our engineering plan reviewer, Brandyon Bullard. He was promoted to a project manager. And then we had a new hire, Lisa Rodriguez, is our senior capital project manager. So they are busy working on projects. So one thing you will see that's new on this list are the parks capital projects. Now that we do have those project managers on board, we are working together with Parks and Rec to kind of provide the technical oversight from a project management perspective within our project management group. So you'll see those and the status of those projects appearing on our list now as well. I will not read this whole sheet to you. I will kind of go over some highlights and then feel free to chime in with any questions you might have. The, in our street projects, the White Oak Roundabout design on that project is completed. There is going to be, it'll take a little time to get everything approved through DOT because that is a lap funded project, so we are currently waiting on their review of those final documents. We did have a couple of easements that we had to go back and revise the language in because they were not able to be used by the utilities that they were acquired for. So those are the couple things we have in the works there. The Lake Drive winding project is currently under construction. That should be wrapping up in the next couple months easily. It's been moving pretty quick, so we are close to finishing up that one. The other one we currently have under construction is Vandora Springs Road Improvements, and we are pulling that one kicking and screaming across the finish line, hopefully, so we're, we're getting there. It's been one of those that we've found everything that you could possibly find when you start digging underground, so if you've been out there lately, it's looking a little more complete, and there's some sidewalk in and then some seating and straying, so we're, we're working on a completion timeline there. And then, Joan Sausage, we are continuing work there. You saw an amendment tonight to do some well and septic investigations for properties abutting the improvements there. A lot of them have wells in the front yard, and there were some concerns about how they might be impacted. So we're moving from twenty-five percent to sixty-five percent design on that one. And then the, the downtown pieces, Pearl and Parker Street improvements and the streetscape are all currently moving through design as well. The sidewalk projects, the three we have are Garner Road, Aversboro Road, and Bryan Road. All three of those are moving from the twenty-five percent design to sixty-five percent design, so we're about halfway, halfway through the design at this point, and just, just moving forward. The parks projects, the four, as you are likely aware that we have in the works, are the improvements at White Deer Park, the South Garner Greenway, Yergin Park, and the Meadowbrook Dam is the portion that we're working on first before the full, you know, park design. So all four of those are just in the kickoff stages. And then for stormwater projects, we have a culvert lining repair project at Junction Boulevard, which was, the award of that bid was on your agenda tonight, so that will be our next one to get started in construction. That was a project that stemmed from the two thousand seventeen assessment that was completed of the large pipes, so that will be a repair project. And then also on your agenda tonight was the stormwater assessment, which is kind of the sister project to that two thousand seventeen project, to look at the smaller pipes within the town and, and evaluate their condition to spur our next list of stormwater capital projects. And I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much, actually, Leah. Yeah, I'm encouraging, I'm encouraged to hear that kicking and screaming, hopefully we'll have to go much longer, but we'll get the project finished, but we have a lot of important ones on here. Council members, questions for our town engineer?
One question in reference to a DOT project that pertains to the bridge that's over, going, going over seventy, fifty, going over seventy, proximity to Lake Drive. Yep, is that still, has, to be scheduled to be let sometime soon?
It, it is. There are several DOT projects that I am still waiting on updates from them for, so as soon as I get information back, I will let you know on any current timelines. But I know that they are, are still moving toward that because we've been coordinating with them as they complete their stormwater design, because we had done some stormwater revisions as well, and also their utility relocation. All of those plans are underway, so I think they're still on, on progress, and if anything has changed since the last timeline that we have, I'll let you know when I hear back from that project manager.
Thank you.
Sure.
So the, on the Yergin property total project, it's seventeen million, is that like for phase one, is that, how solid is that number for sort of the phase one of Yergin's?
I would say none of those are real solid at this point. Definitely all preliminary estimates. I would say we're about at that thirty percent design phase, just the preliminary design that was done, so that's the engineer's estimate as best they know at that point.
And for the Meadowbrook, is that just sort of an allocation from the bond funds? That's not a total completion number? That's just sort of what we've allocated from the bonds on paper, sort of?
Correct, yeah, I think that, that will end up being, since we're doing some work initially that we didn't plan on doing, I think those numbers are likely to change as we move forward.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
We had also talked about making some changes in Meadowbrook, maybe to help bring the cost down, but of course, the dams can put the cost up, but anyway. And we hadn't had those discussions, we hadn't seen the consultant in life forever. I mean, are they still working? I'm being ugly, I mean, it's like, we're talking about months and months and months and months, we hadn't even gotten an update or seen anything. I'm just curious.
They're still working.
Okay, I know they're working, I was being a smart aleck.
Lot of work. Yeah, we can, we can get you an update on where they are.
Okay. So it look, it does look like two projects will be completed sometime here in the next cut, two or three months, Vandora Springs, hopefully, and Lake Drive. So we'll have to get two products done, that'd be good. Possibly cleaned up.
Yes.
They both, they both look better, I mean, but they'll, they'll look completely different.
Right.
So, anyway, that's, that's good news to hear, thank you for staying on top of that.
We've got several of those sidewalk projects that, once they get rolling, those are a little shorter in duration, hopefully, so we can, we can see some things.
And Junction Boulevard, stormwater we talked about years ago, that's when me and Mr. Kennedy were on Public Works, and, I mean, that's not a, you know, sexy thing, but it's got to be done. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Matthews, anything? I don't know how to listen here, but the, the projects we're doing, I call them where we're doing our ADA compliant at sidewalks, junctions, that's been going on.
DOT, yeah.
Right, that's the NC DOT project. It is. Yes, yes, so NC DOT has been doing the project on many, many ramps in town to upgrade them. They are, I think they should be close to complete on that.
I'm going to ask you here what the status is.
Yeah, the, the last date that I had heard was February of two thousand twenty-three to be finishing up, so we'll verify if any, if that timeline has changed as well.
They're working their way down Aversboro right now, and they can't miss either.
I've seen, yeah.
They're getting there.
Okay, thank you very much. Anything else? Okay, you've got the sheet before you, you can take it with you. Okay, Mr. David here, your finance manager.
Yeah, good evening to y'all.
Good evening.
Just going to expand a little bit on, on some of the information that Leah provided to you. As she mentioned, the project managers are on board now, so staff is working on developing some, some tracking tools for projects, and hopefully we can sort of combine some of this information we've given you separately at some point in the future. We're, we're working on a, a tool to kind of keep track of everything and update estimates as they become more refined. So, as she mentioned, a lot of these were very early initial estimates, so the project managers are working on that now, too, as we prepare for the first sale of the two thousand twenty-one bonds. So we're working towards preparing the information we need to do at the LGC and to get approval for that bond sale to occur in the coming months. So they are working through updated estimates for projects so that we can go to them and let them know how much we need, you know, the amount of money we need for that first bond sale. So what I prepared, and you should have a handout, hopefully everyone got the, the large print edition. This is just kind of giving you a snapshot of where the, the dollars stand for both the two thousand thirteen bonds and the two thousand twenty-one bonds. So you have the four blocks at the top represent the, the bond questions from the two thousand thirteen bonds, and just kind of go over the format here. In each section, you have the amount that was approved by the voters for that particular purpose. You have the total revenues to date, which would include the, the sale of the bonds, any premiums the bond sold for, interest on those proceeds, any grant funding, any partner agency funding that went into those projects. The expenditures to date for those projects, the current encumbrances are those items that were contracted for and are, and are underway but not expended yet, and then the current balance. And you can see for the two thousand thirteen bonds, those are, are pretty well exhausted when you look at what we're already under contract for as far as design and things like that on some of the street projects, where the construction will flip over to the two thousand twenty-one bonds to carry on and, and complete those projects. The, the Parks and Rec bonds from the two thousand thirteen referendum, we do have a, a balance there left, but we have sort of earmarked those for some of the needs at the rec center. We have the roof assessment that's underway, and we'll see what the results of that are and what, what potentially could be needed there for, for repairs or, or anything to, you know, any other future expenses there. But beyond that bucket of money from two thousand thirteen, everything else is, is pretty well expended and will be taken down to zero as we go through. Yes, sir?
I have a question. You said roof assessments. Tell us about that, because I, I know we've resolved all of that, and there's still a warranty, what would be our expenses related to a roof assessment on the rec center?
I don't know that I know all the particulars, but we did contract with REI engineers to come in and, and kind of take a close look at it on our behalf, I think to, to see if there are any other warranty issues that we may need to address regarding that or any other issues outside of the warranty that need to be taken care of as well.
There are at least one or two spots that still, from time to time, will get a drip of water.
Why would that cost us anything?
What would it cost?
Why would that cost us anything? Then there's, was there no warranty carryover or anything from all the?
We pretty much settled with the contractor, but then there is a roof warranty, but I guess we got to prove maybe what it is and get an assessment before we can, you know, make a claim against it. But I don't know how valid that claim's going to be with all of the issues we had with the contractor, so we'll, we'll get a report and then we'll figure out, you know, where we go from there.
In some cases, the length of time that to complete the building, some of our warranties were close to being completed, or expired, you know, shortly after we took ownership of the building, too, just depending on when the warranties took effect. So not all the warranties, you know, started just the day that we closed out, so some of those were already in effect.
Was that covered in like the settlement stuff we did or not as far as warranty extensions and?
There was some discussion of that, and it has to do with, some of the warranties started with substantial completion, and some of them started when it was finally closed out, and I think even by the time we settled, most of the warranties were almost out. But to the extent that we could extend any of those warranties, we did battle over what substantial completion meant and when they would start.
Thank you.
But there were two different roof contractors, and I think they had two different warranty periods because of the two types of roof.
One contractor, but two different types of roof. I believe, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Can I follow up on that?
Go ahead.
We also had door access controls and water heaters replacement. Are they things that are down the water, I mean, the thing, I mean, up in long, the water heater already gone bad? I'm assuming it has.
Yeah, it has.
It has, it has, and so we, we've had issues with the access, the controls for the door access as well as the hot water heater, so both are having to be looked at and replaced.
And they're both out of warranty.
Door access controls actually are more, are more of the coordination that was or wasn't done in design of the building with the vendors that we use for other buildings. So I think part of that is, is, would have, it would have been a cost we'd incurred earlier had the coordination been done, and unfortunately, we're having to go back and do some of that coordination ourselves after the fact.
We need to look at one of them home warranty commercials they have on TV and slap it on the rec center. I'm sorry, I couldn't resist. I mean, the roof, well, the roof has been issues. We had issues with the contractor who installed it, we had issues with the inspector with the material, we had issues with the design, I mean, it's just been a issue.
It's better than it was, but it's still some.
I'll be quiet.
Still some lingering things here and there.
Yes.
Despite of that, it's quite a nice facility to exercise in, and we're getting a lot of good use of it, but I mean, I agree, it's, it's a shame where, where we are on the warranties and those kinds of things, but it's a great addition to our town. I'm glad it's finally open, has been open for a while.
With the funding for the senior center that Congresswoman Ross helped to get for the town, once that, those funds are received, would that, would that work be completed sometime later this year, we think? I don't mean budget year, I mean calendar year. You think most of it might get done?
I'm not sure we'll get the funding within the calendar year. It's taken us over a year. We haven't gotten the funding for the previous fiscal budget allocation for the Ram Mill project yet, so we don't know exactly how long it's going to take to access the funding. It's a very long process with the federal, with the federal process.
Okay.
We'll also have to do some design work for the proposed projects as well. Right now, we've identified them as issues in projects, but we need to do further design work as well.
Hopefully, we'll get designed sometime this year, and we'll get it constructed sometime in the future. Okay, thank you.
Ask for Mr. Peck.
Just, just quickly, wanted to mention on the, the two thousand twenty-one section below, you'll see most of those numbers are red because we haven't sold the, the first, the first set of bonds yet, but once we do sell those, those will come in and reimburse the, the town's coffers for these initial expenditures.
Did you mention a date or time when we anticipate selling the first?
Yeah. Right now, we're still, we've got a, we've got to speak to someone with the LGC and kind of look at their calendar, but we did take an initial look at it, and probably the, the closing, or excuse me, the bond sale would probably take place late May, early June, and then it would, you know, be seven, probably seven to ten days later that it would actually close and we would have the funds.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Public Safety and Services Facility Bond, there's a revenue to date of two hundred, and then there's also a note that ARP funds will be used for gap funding to complete this project. project. Two questions on that. Remind, I don't recollect that decision being made at the council level and I also don't see it on the ARP Act fund breakdown in the packet. So where did, where did the gap funding for the fire center tap into the ARP funds? How did, when did that happen?
That's a, that's a possibility. I don't.
Yeah, I think.
Have the exact document with me.
I think there, yeah, I may, I may have worded that incorrectly that it, to say that it will be used, but I think it has been recommended that ARP funding be looked at for that, that approximately $1.5 million gap.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to it. I just, it wasn't tracked anywhere and I didn't remember it coming to us yet. So it was just.
Yeah, on, on a couple of reports, we had some notes that ARP could be used for gap funding.
And the 200, what's the 200 on that?
That was the money that was set aside for some initial planning and design from, from the general fund.
Right. Thank you.
That's all, Mr. Beck?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. I saw him working down at the front today. Little staff short, so he was at the building window. Mr. Dickerson, what else you have?
I think we're going to get a report on the Talk of the Town and.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, members of council. Just quickly, want to share with you a few highlights for the January edition of Talk of the Town report. First, a reminder that council will hold its winter retreat on February 23rd and 24th, and we'll hold our retreat upstairs in the training room. So we're working to prepare the agenda and the items for the retreat. So you'll be getting more information in coming weeks on that. And we mentioned the senior center facility improvement project, which we're very excited to receive federal funding for. There'll be a media event this Friday at 11:30 at the senior center. The Congresswoman wants to be able to come and highlight the project and give us a ceremonial big check as part of sort of recognition of the project and the importance of the project. So we're excited about that. And then also, Public Works update, just a real quick update. Our leaf collection is back on regular schedule. All Star collected about 1,100 tons of leaves during November and December. So that was quite, quite the pickup during the November, December timeframe. We also have the free recycling event, electronics recycling event scheduled for February 18th. And the 2023 cleanup schedule has been posted on the town's website as well. So in addition to these items, Public Works has identified January as sort of cleanup time within the town. And so they're doing a sweep of the entire town, especially now that leaves are picked up and we have better access and view of, of areas that could use some, some cleanup and some tidying. So they'll be working on all that, that through the month of January. And then finally, we have our Garner Info App Analytics for you. We had the last 30 days from December to January, we had 23 requests, excuse me, 29 requests, of which 97% were completed or in progress. And in addition to that, the last page in your report has our year-end summary for the Garner App Analytics from, so this looks at the calendar year 2022. So for calendar year 2022, we had 398 requests, of which the top two requests were focused on tall grass and weeds on private property and junk vehicles on private property as well. So just wanted to give you an overview of that. Underneath the chart, we also have a heat map. Heat maps give you a sense as to locations within the town limits of where we're seeing the most requests. So the areas that are the, the reds and the orange areas that tend to be those colors will show you a greater concentration of areas where we get requests compared to other areas in town. And as we've seen throughout the year, our Public Works team and our inspections team are sort of getting the most requests through the app and are addressing those issues promptly. So that's it for our overview for the January month report. I'm happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
I got one. Normally with the retreat coming up, which is always a good thing for us, because I remember last year we got a lot accomplished off of that. And I think one keynote thing when we had, talked about affordable housing countywide and had the presentation, I thought that was really good. Can we give you, or do we need to do a sort of work session, ideas that we might want to see as part of that retreat? Start compiling that list of things?
I think the manager has.
How do you want to do that?
Yeah, I think the manager has plans to reach out to council members, share with you a draft agenda of things that we're aware of, that council has indicated they wanted to discuss, things that we also need to make sure council has an opportunity to have a briefings on as we go into budget and those kind of things. And then to, to see what other topics and ideas that council members have. So we will be reaching out, the manager will be reaching out shortly to do that.
Send that to you. Yeah, I'll send that to you before the end of the week.
Okay.
It's, it's things that you've been talking about.
Yeah.
So probably a lot of similar things that you've been talking about. But we'll send that out and see if you have anything else you might want us to look at.
Okay. Is that it? I mean.
There's a financial report in your packet. So if you have any questions about that. There's also some building activity, I think at the end of my packet here. It's not listed in the manager reports, but you have that. But we'll, we'll continue to bring you the graphical.
Okay.
One at a later, at a later time. This gives you some idea of what's going on also. So that's it.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. So we're down to, let's see, Mr. Jones, I believe you said you don't have anything this evening?
No report this evening.
Okay. So we are at council reports, I believe, right? I lost my place there for a minute. So I'll hear from council. Phil, I'll start with you.
Yes, as many of you might have seen on WRL this evening or this morning, had a big fire down on Pagan Road, south of Garner. And my oldest daughter Kelly, she knew the family, the Fortners that lived there. I think they went to church together. And it just, it just happened just that fast. But she was commenting how well that the Garner Fire Department performed, informing everybody what was going on. I think one fireman got injured when one of the ceilings had collapsed down on him. And so I've not heard anything since then. I know Cleveland was mutual aid with him. You could see those on the news media, too, but the house was a total loss. So, but all the family got out safe. That's the main thing. And, but kudos to Garner Fire Department for doing what they do so good. That's all.
Mr. Singleton.
Second one, Mr. Matthews said. We, look around town, we got a lot of streetlights out. I know the ones that are in front of town hall are flagged, that the poles are tagged with the yellow ribbon. I'm assuming that's to be repaired. We got lots on Timber and 70. If you go up Aversboro here and go to 70, the lights are out from up here all the way to the exit ramp on 50. There's seven or eight of them in a row.
We can get, we can get police to do a survey for us like they have done in the past.
Several streets on Timber between Willan and Vandoor on the, Lord, west side, there's six or seven out in a row. Then if you go on Timber from Hearth Drive up to, from Hearth all the way to the post office, there's five or six out in a row. That's just one thing I can think off the top of my head. But I mean, we're paying $10 a pop for them bad boys. And there's, there's probably several, there's probably several hundred out. But anyway, those two that we see the most, but there's, there are ones that you take on the Highway 50 ramp, you turn around and come up by Hudson's where they can do the bridge, they're out. But I'm assuming it's been worked, they've been done.
It could have something to do with the bridge.
The bridge, I won't worry about that because they're going to tear it up anyway. But the other side is, is, is out. So there are quite a few lights that are out on, on those two main corridors that people see. And again, the ones in front of town hall are out, but they do have the yellow flagging on it. So I'm assuming that, I understand that Google Fiber has made some utility cuts and texting back and forth with Mr. Hodges on Monday. And that, maybe that's what happened here. So anyway, I just wanted to report that, quite a few out. Thank you.
What's the story with the purple light down Aversboro Road on that little, you know, the whole parking lot is purple. If you've driven by it, you've had to seen.
Oh, yes.
Is that a new norm or what's the deal on that?
Little small.
If you hadn't seen it.
Little small apartment complex, you pass it, yeah.
Right across from Aversboro Square.
Yeah.
Can I comment on that? I know it's a weird thing.
Everybody's at what with the purple light?
And, and the funny thing is, we drove by some and my kids asked me why they were purple. So then I had to go on a hunt to figure this out. But apparently there was some, I think the lights are naturally purple, the light bulbs they use now. And then they use some kind of a filter on the, like exterior of the light to change the color so that it's not. And at some point, they had a batch of like faulty, I don't know if it's faulty manufacturing or what happened. But I actually saw an advertisement from Duke saying, if you've noticed those lights, they want to be notified of where they are because they're trying to switch them out with proper ones. So.
There's a news story this week about the purple lights and how to report them.
On the way home, it's on the right there.
Yeah, you can't miss it.
Okay.
I hope that's a new norm.
You know what he's talking about, don't you?
No, I hadn't.
Look at the right, you, you drive right by. Right across Aversboro Square.
Right past the entrance to Georgetown Manor, and it's right there on the right, those apartments. It's right across from the Church of Latter Day Saints in that area. You can't miss them.
It's a purple glow.
Never mind, obviously you can.
Interesting. I stay home with that. No, I'm teasing. Ms. Behrings, if you want to record.
Yes, a couple of things. The business on Garner Road near, oh my goodness. Anyway, it had, it has the granite slabs that they work on. They've gotten to where they're, they're keeping the slabs out in front of the building. They were out there all last weekend. My understanding is they're not supposed to be closer than the, the front at the sides, right?
They can be up to the sides of the building, yeah.
They were out in front all weekend. It's been getting worse. Second thing is that the, the lot behind Family Auto was cleared some time ago, did a great job of that. But there's some piles of debris out there. It's wonderful. We could encourage them to just go on and remove those piles. It looks, some of it looks like construction debris, but it's not very big piles. It's just eyesores.
Okay, we'll check.
And we had the Downtown Garner Association Retreat last week. It was productive and we got a big work planned. And Joyce Stevens was elected the new president for the next, what, two years, Mr.?
It's one year.
One year. At any rate, we're moving forward. We're working on building the board up again and getting our goals accomplished. And that's all. Thank you.
Just telling you.
So at the work session, I'm making assumptions. So at the work session, we'll do what Mr. Matthews said. It's kind of, you'll consolidate sort of our thoughts and then we'll do a draft agenda for the retreat at the work session, kind of get a first look at that so we can tweak it. Okay. And then we'll also.
Yeah, I'll get it to you before.
Okay.
Work session.
And then on the, at the work session, will we go kind of a budget timeline for the year again? We don't have to do it right now, but.
When we plan to do the next update?
Because I know we've got new staff and they might do stuff differently.
Sure, sure. So part of what we're, had put on the draft agenda for the retreat is to not only go over process for budget, but also kind of share some information that we've shared with the departments as part of our budget kickoff, kickoff, which we did right after the holidays, update some of the financial information as well as we get more information. And so we'll be working on all that to finalize it so that the information that we have to date, we'll be sharing with council and talking not only about process, but what we know as far as revenues and expenditures as well.
Thank you. I figured things are going to be different this year since we've got so many new folks involved. So it's probably going to be different for us as well. Also, the gentleman had mentioned the merger meetings. Are we going to get a written report or something or on feedback from those meetings so that?
We will. So part of the consultant's work is to facilitate those two meetings. So they took notes and recorded those meetings. From those meetings, they'll be developing the survey, survey that the mayor had described earlier. We'll be sharing that not only in the unincorporated areas, but also townwide. And we'll be working with the town's communication team as well as the fire department on sharing that survey electronically with our stakeholders. Once that survey is completed, the consultants will then compile all that information and complete a report, at which time they'll share it with the MOU committee members as well as share it with the full council and the fire board as well.
Thank you.
Just one thing in reference to this past, well, this past Monday with the MLK celebration. I know the town didn't physically have a event this year, but the virtual event, which was, what is it, Infinite Power, was very well done. If you haven't seen it, I would recommend you taking a look at the, the virtual MLK celebration that was put on by, by the organization that puts it on. I know the town is a part of that effort. It's, it's very well done.
Yeah, we want to thank Cal for all his effort in putting those videos together and creating some of that and compiling it and just editing and put it in the format that it was in. Make it really interesting. So, yeah.
Was that it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, I think my thunder was already stolen. I was going to mention the MLK if you get a chance to see that. I still look forward to the time we could have one in person again, but it was done good personally. And also, y'all, don't forget, Congressman Ross will be here. I'm not sure how soon we'll get the money, but I think there'll be a big old check there, gray, about as tall as I am there. So we'll see how we get that deposited. But anyway, come to that if you can. This is probably something I ought to, yes, take care of myself, but the, the parking lot at the post office is chock full of all kinds of bad holes.
Holes, disrepair.
Large, large.
Yeah, large holes. I mean, that, that's a disgrace really in.
We'll reach out to them again.
Yeah.
It's a pretty constant thing that we're, that we have to do with them.
Yeah, yeah. I talked with the postmaster sometime back about complaints about the inside of the building being pretty unkempt. But yeah, those holes are not noticeable even when you try to avoid them. Sometimes you cannot. So, okay.
The inside that you mentioned is very noticeable.
Yeah, it is, sure enough. Okay, with that, that's all I have. Anything else for the good of the cause from system manager? Well, the judge has already spoken, yeah. Okay. You threw Leah? Okay, all right. All right, motion for adjournment?
Does that move?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
[inaudible]